I'll call order the chairman of Dayton City Council for June 27. Stand up and pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we need... Motion in the second for the agenda.
Second.
Scott, Matt, any discussion?
I...
He say my name? I didn't say a thing.
Oh.
Okay.
Dave, second.
Looking to get one item added to the agenda tonight, Mayor and Council. Item M underneath action items will be requested for the E-21 repair approval. We'll have discussion items that we did provide that earlier today. Sorry about the delay in getting that. We got it about now before we sent it.
So are we doing that after the closed session?
No, we'll do it before the closed session to add it to action items, please. It would be fantastic.
Okay.
Item M.
So item M.
Yep.
That's a fire truck, just...
Correct. E-21 is a truck.
Any other changes to the agenda with all the licenses and everything? You just waiting for the next meeting or...
Yes.
Okay. Any more changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, consent and a motion in a second.
It's on motion.
Second. Dave and Travis, and any discussion?
Yes. See, I need it explained to me why a crosswalk policy costs 12,000 bucks. Because to me, I'm just a dumb milk farmer, 12,000 bucks for a couple hours of work. What's more, is there more involved in that, Kevin? Or...
That's Jason.
That's Jason. Okay. That explains it.
For one, we don't know what you want. So there will be a series of meetings, we presume, and discussions to identify what it is you're looking to accomplish with it. We do have thoughts and information pulled together, but there will be a process in it. And you won't be charged the full amount. It'll be an hourly rate or an hourly cost for the work done, and it'll be only the amount of what it is. So if it's very clean what needs to be done and produced, it'll be a much less cost.
It could be 1,000 bucks, it could be 12,000 bucks.
Could be.
Okay. That's better.
Why, so I went through it and I didn't really see any... I didn't quite, I didn't see any scope or goals and proposals that exactly that because you don't know what it's going to entail.
Yeah, our instruction was give us a proposal to prepare a crosswalk policy, and that was the only direction. So part of that is identifying what the city's goals are for achieving that policy and then what constitutes in the policy and then how we develop that.
The other question I'd have, Zach, is our planners that we have now, they can't do this?
They can, yep. It is a possibility. So historically, we've always looked to our consultants to do this kind of work to help us out with those kind of things, but we can most certainly do that internally if we'd like.
I'd prefer to do it internally personally.
Well, they're both new though, right?
They are both new.
That's all right. I mean, this isn't rocket science.
I'm giggling because this is the conversation Zach and I had on Thursday, which is like, why are we paying someone to do it's two hours of work where even we just sit down and write down what we want and then bring it in front of council. It makes me quick, I don't think this is like has to be super involved by any stand, stand, by any...
You almost walk up the street over across from the school, the one that's there, and mimic that.
Yeah. What's the hourly charge, Jason? I'm curious.
Would be dependent on the personnel involved.
Okay.
On average, what's the hourly charge?
At the city rate, it would probably be about $140 an hour.
I think before we move forward with this part and have Jason do it, we figure out what we want to do and direct staff to go that way.
Okay.
Personally. That's just me. I'm one guy.
Can we pull that item out?
Yep, also we can.
I think it needs more discussion as well.
Well, pull out as in table it or pull out as in move it down outside of consent?
Well, at least outside of consent.
We can move it behind item H in the business if you'd like.
Okay.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yep.
I'll make a motion where you pull the crosswalk policy and put it for later discussion.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, so he's moved it after H, so with those, that amendment, are we... Need another motion in a second for the consent.
I'll make a motion with the, what would you call it? Update or amendment? Amendment to the consent.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion on consent?
I have just a couple of things. One is just a typo in the minutes. I'm quite sure we pump more than 250 gallons a day of water in the wintertime. You were giving a contrast of winter to summer, 250,000 probably to a million now, not 250 gallons, so I'd add some more zeros there.
It's number where it puts dot.
I knew you'd catch that, Dave.
Thanks for letting me have it, Scott. This is not LMC. This is an observation and I'll get to a little more on this later, but you know, we're paying, I don't know if what we're seeing here is the monthly rate for leasing the fire department and police radios from Hennepin County totals about $6,000 on this payment of claims, so I'm guessing that's probably what we pay monthly.
I would...
They see it on there pretty regularly.
Yep, I would suggest so.
Yeah. For both.
Yep.
For both of us, that would be accurate. I know mine just went 32 because of the addition of the new radios.
Right. And so I want to give a little bit of an update when we get around to this, but there was a good deal of money funded by the state, you know, and they're giving money to everything related to public safety and they mentioned at this LMC meeting I was at last week that radios falls into that category of things that could be funded through this new state funding and something we ought to explore.
We got to remember the new state funding is a one-time funding. It's not a yearly funding, so it's only funded once after that.
But I think if we had the option to buy the radios with a grant, I'm sure Hennepin County is still going to dig in some kind of maintenance fee for owning the airwaves, but...
They're pretty much same cost either way, whether we purchase them or lease them through Hennepin County. It's just if something goes down and breaks, we can bring them to Hennepin County and they'll give us a replacement radio and repair it for us for free of charge. Also, our MDC fees are under that, so every squad computer that we have in our squads is also under that bill, too. It's just not the radio lease.
Okay, those computers though, we own those, correct?
We own them, but we have to pay a support fee to them every month, and that's under the radio lease. That whole bill is entitled with the MDC fees and the radio lease.
Okay. Well, that was, you know, that was my catch for there. I think my other questions around the consent stuff have been answered, so I'm good.
Anybody else? All right, we got a motion. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Open forum. Is anybody here for open forum for non-agenda items? Okay, come on forward. Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address. No council action will be taken and items will be referred back to staff.
I'm Jeff Payne, 14465 Ox Bowing. I brought visual aids here. I've been in Minnesota for about two years now. When I moved here, I thought it was really odd that we allow these. I've confirmed with staff last week maybe that these are not allowed in public right of way without a permit, but I think it's getting out of hand. These were taken yesterday from one intersection, was Berkshire and North Diamond Lake Road. So I guess their request is how can we enforce this? These are such a, I saw, I think, and you guys are all from Dayton, you see them everywhere. They've even put them on utility poles that are too high to reach. So I guess first question, how do we enforce this? And then second, if citizens want to enforce it, these are going to make their way into the trash, what's the right way to do that?
I'll take the stand. I don't disagree with you. And we get complaints, I see it all over the place, and we've talked about it. I'm not sure what the mechanism is that we can...
Yeah.
Every Friday. They go up on Friday, come down on Sunday.
Yeah, and our association does not allow these, and we've just started taking them down. They're going in the trash, but it's everywhere, so yeah.
Technically, they're supposed to be brought to Public Works and kept for, I believe, seven days to allow the companies to come and pick them up.
Okay. And Public Works is, is that here?
No. Sounds about like 1-3700, sounds about like...
Okay.
That's right up the east of town.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for open forum? Do we have anybody online?
We do have a few online, and if you would like to speak in open forum, please use the raise your hand function. Not seen any.
Okay, we'll move on to staff consulting, council update.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I only have two quick updates tonight, just letting everyone know that next week on Tuesday, we are closed for July 4th. We will be open Monday and Wednesday, both before and after the holiday for residents to stop by. And then we also have the open house for the EDA on the Historic Village Framework Plan that is going to be Thursday this week, 6:00 to 7:30. Council is invited to attend that meeting as well. They'll be handled at the Activity Center. Food will be provided, so hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
David?
Do not have updates tonight?
Great.
I have a couple of updates. The pickleball courts in Hayden Hills are finished. The pickleball nets are up and they're painted, so they're good to go. I've seen there's people being out there using them, which is great. The zip line up at Sundance Woods Playground is out of action at the moment. The zip line is fraying on there, so we've changed the chain of seat up so nobody can use it. I'm looking at ordering some new parts for that, so I'm not sure when that's going to be back up and running. Update on the water treatment plant. We have had some interactions with Minnesota Department of Health. They have made some observations that they need to have corrected in the plans. Those are being incorporated in the plans. There's been some conversation about why we're doing these things. One was to do with location of floor drains. The other was about chemical feed and how that should be done, being as it's being done underground. We're incorporating those revisions into the plan set. There were some other considerations as to where those things went, but we need to get those done before we can go out to bid at the moment. They will be completed before the next council meeting, so we will have the bid authorization on the next council meeting. But I think it's important to get all that stuff together. We're looking at what the impact of that will be on the timeline. There was some wiggle room built into it, so we're going to try and tighten up that so we don't go into the winter without getting the structure up. So that's where we're at with it. It's unfortunate, but we need to make sure that those plans go out correctly.
So this issue just pushed it back a meeting, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and they weren't significant, but they were enough to...
They were enough to change some of the plans and where things were located. And the chemical feed is still being worked through. We've got two lines coming out that we stubbed into well for in anticipation of this because it's underground. They want three lines. Normally, that wouldn't be an issue, so there's a bit of back and forth where we need the two or three. I think we will end up going with three, which may have some significant impact on how we get through the parking lot there. We may have to remove more blacktop than we were initially expecting.
So is this a matter of we missed some sort of statute or missed some sort of guidance?
No, I think this is a personal preference by the person who's doing the reviewing.
Lovely.
Is there anything we can do to, I don't want to miscue the building up because that pushes everything back. Like, is there anything we can do to speed that up? Like, will they have this in a week and we can do a quick three-minute call to vote on it? Because my guess is that we're pretty much on the same page when we move forward with it, I'm guessing, but or is this we need the full two weeks of next meeting or however many weeks?
I know, if that's a possibility, then I could pull something together. I don't know what the mechanism is for doing that. If it's just something I email out to you guys or I'm getting approval that way, I don't know.
Yeah, special meeting.
Special meeting.
All we need is...
Three days.
Three days.
Okay. Well, let me pull this together. We should have something hopefully by the end of this week, and I'll coordinate through Zach, and if we can get it together, let's...
Because if we don't get the building up this year, it pushes everything way, way back by months and months and months, so we need to get that moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a brief update on the master plan from Fitch and Associates. Think we've been able to gather all the data that they're looking for. It's been a little bit of a challenge with the minimal data that we do have here. I'm still waiting on one aspect from Hennepin County Dispatch to get that to Fitch and Associates, so hopefully we'll start, see a little bit more movement on that. And then want to pass on congratulations to the new recruit class. They all passed their fire, too, so they're all certified, and now they'll be working with their mentors for the next six months or so to be removed from probation.
Cool.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing I got is our embedded toast worker has started. So she was in office one week last week, or one day last week. Two days this week, she'll be in office, and then we're going to discuss with the other agencies how we're going to keep rotating her. So she has started. Looking forward to see results from that.
So she's, today she's just bouncing from the three, what, three?
Yeah, she does Rogers, us, and Champlin. So when we first started, it was two days in Champlin, two in Rogers, and one here, and then we just rotated that schedule.
Sure, okay.
And we're going to do it for three weeks, and then we're going to sit down with her and the agencies and see what works best for her.
Okay. I have no updates tonight. Jason?
None here.
I've got nothing.
Let's go ahead. Travis?
None here.
I got nothing. Dave?
Just to be brief, I was able to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference last week for a couple of days. Well worth the time, I will say. Lots going on. Of course, everybody knows that the state used to have a $17 billion surplus, and it's now like 1.5. So there's lots and lots of new programs because all of that money was available and it got spent. Some of that could benefit us for sure. You know, they still have a high priority on water things. MBH is prioritizing projects that deal with manganese in water, so that could help us as we continue the discussion around the old village on what to do. There are some grants available to support election software. Some pretty significant changes around PTSD, and I know we'll be talking about some of that. Further, I have some, I didn't bring it with me though, Gary, I have some fire training information packet that I'd like to pass on to you. I don't know whether that will be useful to you or not, but might be another way to look at some free training.
Sure.
I already asked about the radios, and also there is a grant available to us through the LMC for grant writing that we should probably take advantage of. It's only 5K, but it could get us, you know, a grant proposal. And lots more, so I don't need to run through all that tonight. I've got some pretty good ideas on things we should pursue, and I'll bring those to this group when they're more fully formed, but it was a very good experience and I certainly was glad to have been able to go.
Matt?
I just have a quick one, so I just, we talked a few weeks ago about the solicitor's license. We've had a lot of people going door-to-door, no one has one, keep tracing them back to the city. But the reason why I think it's important and glad we have it, there was somebody going around, supposedly from ADT, selling ADT services, and a neighbor called ADT and they said, we don't send people door-to-door to do sales. So they directed us to contact the police, which we did, and it's just something to be mindful of, because there's a reason we have that solicitor's license in place.
All right. Okay, on the new business, item E, audit report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. We have Matt Mayer from Bergen KTV here to present to us, and I'm going to help him get his presentation up.
Thanks for your help, Zach, in getting that set up. We had a little bit of a hiccup with the presentation here. I found a draft we're going to use anyway, it's got the charts and graphs that we need to present here for you, and we'll give you the results of the 2022 audit. Again, as Zach mentioned, I'm Matt Mayer of Bergen KTV, representing your firm, your city's audit firm. The city has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public, and our job as your auditors is to come in at the end of the year to test, examine, give an opinion on those statements so that users of them can be assured they're a true and accurate picture of your financial position at the end of each year. We do that through an independent auditor's report, which you'll find in the front of the financial statements that you receive in your packets, and that audit report was an unmodified opinion, the best that we can give you, and it means that the numbers that we're going to be looking at in a little bit are a true and accurate picture of where the city of Dayton ended the 2022 fiscal year and also the results of your operations, the revenue coming into the city, the expenses, the expenditures going out. There's two other reports in your materials. One of those is a Minnesota legal compliance audit, and that audit is done as asked by the Office of the State Auditor to check the city on things like conflicts of interest, contracting and bidding, how you're depositing, investing your funds, things like that. There are about 90 pages of statute that apply to municipalities and how they run their accounting, their finances. We tested all of those and had no issues, no findings for the 2022 fiscal year, so a clean report there. And then the final report is one called Government Auditing Standards, and that is a report on your internal controls. And internal controls are your policies, your procedures, it's how you do business here as an organization. And we had two recommendations for you this year. One is one you see very often, I think actually each year, a lack of segregation of accounting duties. We're just reminding council of the small office staff that you have when it comes to accounting, and as a result, there are going to be some risks with that, that we don't get every single check and balance that we'd like to have. There is going to be a cost-benefit decision you need to make regarding the risk versus the cost of addressing that risk, but we'll continue to alert you of that, and you can make those cost-benefit decisions from a governance policy standpoint going forward based on our feedback, and if you have questions on that, we'd be happy to respond to that at the end of the presentation here as well. We had one other finding as well, and during the audit during 2022, we found that there was some infrastructure contributed from developers, both utility, street infrastructure, that ultimately didn't hit the books in prior years, that all got added back on, and we're making, and we want to have a recommendation to ensure that there are some procedures in place to get our arms around all of that new infrastructure that's coming into the city and make sure that does get booked as a capital asset on the books. Certainly not a...
What procedure would have caught that? I mean, in maybe closing out projects or what were...
Yeah, I think it's a great question, because typically, when you think of the accounting department, the accounting department are the ones that are processing the transactions, the checks, paying the bills. If we're paying for it or you're making, you're doing it through a grant or through bonded debt, it's going to be cash outlay of the city. But when you have a developer come in, yeah, I think you probably accept that somehow as a council, I would assume, some sort of a acceptance of that infrastructure, and when that's happening, some sort of communication with the finance team to do that. There was some, a lot of things going on. I've been with the city about 15, 20 years now. It had a lot of movement in the accounting department. You had some consultants come in, you had onsite staff, and I think just having a consistent approach to that, and I think probably figuring out a way to take it from your acceptance from a council and moving it to the finance team to value that and put that on the books is appropriate. I'm not overly concerned by it, it's not talking about the dollars and cents, there was no cash involved, it was just a recognition of that, and I think it goes to your financial health and it shows the magnitude of city operations, and certainly it's probably not going to affect any of the decisions on the numbers we're talking about tonight, but obviously it is an asset of the city, we want to make sure that it's on the books.
There isn't an ask, it isn't necessarily, I mean, obviously it affects going forward, but we, up until, what was it, two, two years ago, three years ago, when we, when we had a fairly significant firm doing our finances and they didn't catch this, and so that's why I'm wondering, where would you expect this to be caught? And it sounds like it's squishy, given that it's an asset that's kind of handed back to us.
Yeah, and certainly from our standpoint as auditors, too, it's our job to find that, and I'll take our responsibility for that as well. We talked about this with Zach at our preliminary meeting. The thing that we do as auditors is to look at the numbers that you're presenting to us and say, those are right, we can prove it because we vouch it to this and look at that. But the one challenge that we have is the idea of completeness. How do we know what should be on there if we don't know what's going on?
What you don't know.
So it's difficult for us to find that number. But this year, our staff auditor asked the right questions, found that we needed to get those numbers for 2022, and as we were doing that, we found prior years as well that needed to be filled into play as well.
So I guess that answers one of my questions as well. Who should have picked this up tonight? And I hear you, you sort of don't know what you don't know. I mean, you review what the information that you have. I don't think we do any kind of formal action when development closes out or they turn over that infrastructure to us, and you know, maybe that's something we should think about as part of our process.
Jason, is that when we would release the letter of credit? Or don't we kind of indirectly accept something as complete?
The letter of credit seems like the formal process that might be the measurement of it. However, that doesn't necessarily align with the acceptance of the infrastructure, which is the unfortunate part. That is a good trigger, though. But again, that will be, the letter of credit will be reduced or released as the infrastructure is constructed and deemed appropriate in the plans. However, there's still a warranty period before that infrastructure is accepted by the city, so it happens at a later date. And the process of the actual acceptance is not take council action. It's just an administrative acknowledgement that this has become city property at this point.
And so we must send something in to the county to move that?
So I did ask the city of Rogers what they do for theirs, because that was the one I reached out to, and they did respond that they accept them at a council level, so that may be something we do moving forward. It's just, it'd probably be on the consent agenda, just says an acceptance of those items, but...
I don't know that that fixes it.
I don't know if it fixes it either, but at least it acknowledges on the minutes, and then we can review the minutes back when we're going through the audit stuff, so...
And that is one of our audit procedures as well. We read the minutes, see what's going on officially happening here, and that's an aid for us from that completeness standpoint, or finding what we, like you said, know what we know type of thing, so some sort of record of that, it would be helpful. But it's certainly a policy decision, a governance decision from the council as to what level you want to have that happen, so...
Certainly before the, all the retainage is paid back, there should be some checklist. Certainly before the, all the retainer, retainage is paid back, there should be some checklist.
Yeah, so it's different kind of projects. We don't pay retainers to any contractor for the development side of things. The LOC would be what we're talking about here with the letter of credit. Like we are reducing the letter of credit because we don't have as much liability that we'd have to put in the ground if something were to happen.
Does it coincide with maybe the last letter of credit that's returned? Or is it just kind of?
There's a formal release done possibly on a given addition. That probably closer aligns with it because we do hold that until record plans and everything is done. And that is usually about the time that the warranty period would expire.
Okay.
Appreciate the question and glad I could provide that context to you. With my remaining time, I want to give you some perspective on the financial position of the city, results of operations for 2022. Going to look at the general fund and then your two utility funds to give you some perspective on those. Those are the funds that most citizens certainly interact with. And I think you as a council have the most input on as well. The first is the general fund. And the way we look at the general fund is in the context of the budget. You're probably going to start even working on the 2024 budget here in the next month or two. Usually August, September starts working on it, work with the department heads through the fall. And in December of each year, you approve a final budget that is really a directive to city management, city administration, and how you want the city to be run for the year. And also it sets the parameters for spending and the revenue flow coming into the city as well because you approve a property tax levy along with that. If we look at the results or excuse me, the budget for 2022, this is a busy chart. So I'll try and kind of point to the key pieces. In the left-hand column, you can see that revenue is exceeded, equal expenditures and at the bottom line is zero. And what that's telling you is that you had a balanced budget for 2022. And that meant that you expected the inflows to equal the outflows and that your financial position, your fund balance was not going to change at all during the year if the budget was approved exactly, executed exactly as planned. Now you're going to find that this, it's a little hidden by that caption there, but you're going to find that this, as you actually outperformed the budget for the year, and that's the actual results in the second column, bottom line is a positive $411,000. That means that your inflows exceeded your outflows by $411,000. So let's figure out why that happened. Under revenue, you're going to see that revenue was not five and a half million as you budgeted for. It was actually six and a half million dollars, which is good news, obviously. $903,000 more revenue came into the city than anticipated during the 2022 fiscal year. Almost all of that is in one line item, licenses and permits. And that goes to the development activity that's going on here at the city. Okay, so that's good news from that perspective. Keep in mind, license permit, one-time revenue, one-time shot at it. But what that ultimately is going to do is build the tax base hopefully and you move forward from there. But we'll take it for this year and certainly $900,000 to $1,000,000 positive variance is a great place to be. Expenditures for the year did come over budget by about 5%, about $302,000 overall. Two line items are going to jump out at you there. Public safety was one of those. There was some consulting fees as well as the movement to a full-time fire chief, fire administration that played into the budget. That was a budget decision that I think happened mid-year. So you're going to see a little bit of an overage on the budget when it came to those. And then under general government, there was some more IT activity and some equipment purchases in general government that ultimately came in over the budget plan for the year. But within 5% overall, and that was easily absorbed, as you can see, by the revenue variance on the positive side there.
Do we have those broken out somewhere?
As in?
Those two?
Yes, they're in the backside, they're in the back half of the financial statements behind all the notes.
Because that stuff basically, that's going to get us into trouble next year when we lose those permits.
Yep.
You did transfer out of $195,000 to some capital funds for future use. And then that, as I mentioned earlier, $411,000 is available for, for your fund balance, for your financial position. So this is one of the first metrics we use to tell you, did you have a successful year in the general fund or not? I would say from a budget compliance perspective, yes, you did. And you can say that there was some overages on expenditures, certainly. They were more than absorbed by the revenue variance and the fund balance actually increased versus staying the same according to the original plan. Now, the other metric that I'm going to give you when it comes to evaluating the general fund is your financial health in the general fund. And that's measured by your fund balance. And fund balance is basically what's left over at the end of the year. It's what's in your checking account, it's your rainy day fund, it's your contingency fund, it's there for cash flow. And your policy here at the city of Dayton is to have 40% of next year's budget sitting in fund balance at the end of the year. And we've got metrics for 2021 and 2022 versus the current year. Back in 2021, you're at about 43%. And you can see by adding that $411,000 onto the fund balance here in 2022 that you're at about 45.1%. So I think you're right around where you want to be, understanding you're probably going to have some inflationary increases looking at that 2023 budget. But what is nice to see here is that revenue in blue is exceeding expenditures in gray each of the last five years. As a result of that, you've been able to maintain and ultimately build on that fund balance. And the fund balance at the end of the year is in line with the fund balance policy that you guys have set for yourselves. So again, the second of the two metrics that I would have for general fund success show that you're where you want to be when it comes to financial health as well. So I think a successful year for the general fund performance overall. Some of the reasons for that, the revenue for the year was up about 9.2% over the prior year. And you can see that licenses and permits was a big number of that, but it was steady from the prior year. It was about 1.5 million in 2021, 1.7 million almost in 2022. That's a lot more, about three times more than it was back in 2018. So you can see how the development has certainly picked up in just the last couple of years. And again, understanding that's one-time revenue coming in, but ultimately hopefully building on that tax base. The levy for the year was up about a little over $500,000 year over year. At least the general fund portion of that. And then intergovernmental revenue for the year was up slightly. You're getting a little bit more state aid when it comes to police, fire and streets. And I want to mention that tax piece, you know, 500,000, it does sound like a big number and it certainly is a big number going year to year when it comes to that. But I want to provide some context because as we talked about development, 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 you are growing as a city. And the one way to measure that growth is the market value of your city. And another term for that that we use in the calculation of the property tax levy is tax capacity. It's an artificial number, but let's just consider it synonymous with market value, okay? That's the gray bar. And you can see how that has increased over the last five years from about 7.6 million in 2018 to about 13.7 million in 2022. Not quite doubling, but close to doubling in just the four-year period there. Your revenue has also gone up during that time. You asked taxpayers for $4.1 million back in 2018. You've asked them for 6.3 million in 2022. So that is about a $2 million increase over the course of the last four or five years as well. So we want to acknowledge that and the contribution that the taxpayers are making. The point I want to make with this chart though is that the growth in the levy has not been proportionate to the growth in the market value and the tax capacity here at the city. So while both have gone up, they haven't gone up at the same time. You can see the gray portion of the bar is spiking, whereas the slope on the tax levy is a little bit more steady. And as a result of that, the blue bar, the last point I want to make here, is actually declining. And that's the tax rate that your taxpayers are paying. Back in 2018, that was about a 55.7% rate. And that's dropped steadily here in 2022. And that was down to about a 47% tax rate. And I understand that that's going to drop again here in 2023 as you do the calculation on that number. So again, just some perspective on that. Typically, the life cycle of a city where you've got that strong development, we're enjoying the license and permit revenue coming in. Ultimately, that development will plateau. But what you've been able to achieve through that development and the license permit revenue is building that tax base. So when that goes away, you've got the new tax base hopefully to work from and makes decisions based on that. So just providing those numbers for context, when it looks, when we look at this revenue, when you hear that 9% increase in general fund revenues, most of that in the property tax levy. We wanted to provide that context. Spending in the, in the general fund was up about 12.4% for the year. Again, in public safety, several new positions were added. And also in general government, those IT and equipment purchases that I talked about. And also more program activity in culture and rec, including moving the activities director to a full-time position for the year, all contributed to those increases year over year. To wrap things up, I want to take a look at two funds. One of those is the water fund, two of your enterprise funds, the water fund. And the other one is the sewer fund. And the water fund, we had some concerns about this fund last year and we talked about that a little bit. These funds are analyzed a little bit differently. The general fund is very much levy-based. People are not getting, it's not an exchange transaction. They're not paying for something that they can tangibly see. They're actually just paying their property taxes. Whereas the water fund and sewer fund, they're getting a service and they're willing to pay for that service. So we look at it like a business and we are able to analyze it from an operating income perspective or an operating loss perspective. And what you're seeing here the last four years was that the revenue was going up with the new customers coming onboard, but the operating income, in fact, operating losses were growing as demonstrated by the purple and the orange bars. And 2022 was kind of a watershed year in that you had a ton of new customers come onboard. The rate increase was about 3%, so that certainly wasn't the big impact. It was just the number of customers that finally came onboard. And the term that I used in talking with Zach during our preliminary meeting is that I think you're starting to grow into the infrastructure that you've got now. And as a result, you're getting more people on the system. They're paying their monthly, quarterly utility bills. And as a result of that, this fund showed operating income for the first time with depreciation factored in for the first time in the last five years and I think historically going back even before that. So moving in the right direction when it comes to this fund. Another thing that you're not seeing on this particular chart is the connection fees. Connection fees don't count as operating revenue. They're miscellaneous revenue that's not factored in. There's another $4 million that came in and only connection fees alone into this fund. So the water fund is starting to build a very healthy position and ended the year with about $7.6 million in reserves. So a good place to be. Similar story on the sewer side of things. Rate increases, new customers coming onboard during the year, new infrastructure coming onboard. So the expenses are going up mostly related to depreciation. And this fund is showing operating losses. You're still seeing that purple bar there. But from, if we factor depreciation out and from a cash flow perspective, the orange bar shows that you are cash flowing positively from operations. So moving in the right direction there. This fund also gets connection fees or access fees, SAC fees that are not represented here. And this fund does have a healthy financial position as well of about 2.8 million at the end of the year. Not nearly where the water fund is, but certainly moving in the right direction and better than where you've been historically on this fund as well. So I think hopefully moving in the right direction and we'll continue to watch and monitor that one in future years for you.
Is that the depreciation that's not very realistic? I mean it?
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. It's difficult to do specifically in a sewer fund. And keep in mind, depreciation is there to show the use of assets and an estimate for maybe what it's going to cost to pay for them down the line. So if you want to try and cover depreciation, what you're doing is basically setting a sinking fund aside for future renewal and replacement. Oftentimes though, you're not looking to users to fund future renewal and replacement. You're going to find another means ultimately to do that, whether it be contributed assets like we talked about, perhaps financing of it or other grants and other opportunities when it comes down to that. So understanding what your plan is, what the renewal and replacement timeline and needs are, and then matching that up with your fee structure, I think is a good, good exercise regardless. I'll leave it at that. Be happy to stay for any questions, but looking for acceptance of the financial statements so Zach can submit them to the state as the official record of the city of Dayton for 2022.
All right, motion of second, right of me.
I'll make the motion of acceptance.
You got Scott, any second?
I'll second.
Dave, any more discussion on that?
I do have a question and this bounces back to that infrastructure donation piece. So we took a $28 million prior period adjustment. And I guess, you know, the awareness going forward, I think, you know, mostly fixes that problem. But what I, what I don't know how to understand, I guess, is what's that impact to us today? So we, we gained $28 million of assets on the books. And it seems like that, that helps us and hurts us, but I'm not sure what the, you know, what the balance is. The city's worth more money now on paper than we had recognized before. But what's the, you know, what's the downsides to that except we've got this bump in?
Yeah, what I did is we bumped up your depreciation expense here in 2022 is really what it tangibly did to the numbers. And that's why we actually kind of factored depreciation out. I don't know if there's a ton of value in depreciating a contributed asset because you didn't pay for it to begin with. And how you're going to replace it or how you're going to renew it might not come from user fees either. So there is the book approach where we're following the accounting rules. It tells us what to do to make sure that your numbers are consistent with the way everybody else is doing it. That's what generally accepted accounting principles means, that everybody does it the way that GAAP tells us to do it. But then from there, you need to decide how you're going to analyze those numbers and how best those numbers are going to help you run the city and make decisions. And my advice would be to look at it both ways, like we're doing in this chart here. Look at it with the depreciation factored in because that's the book way of doing it and decide if that's a reasonable approach. And if you don't think depreciation is a reasonable number to have in there, then look at it without and then decide if you're operating the way you want to. And my message to you in the sewer fund is that you're not covering depreciation. So is that a conscious decision? And if it is, I don't, I can argue that, but just know that is a conscious decision. But if that orange bar starts to go negative, that means that you're not only not covering depreciation, you're not covering your everyday costs of doing business in that fund.
And orange bar was negative for a long time.
Bring to your attention.
So, yeah, I think as far as the road surface itself, we'll have a better idea when we get that study, I think. But, yeah, that's why I kind of thought it was kind of a, not much of a factor, but.
It's probably why you didn't notice it before five years.
And then.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful.
It is a big number.
That's a big part of it.
I guess I do have a question for Zach. Can you back up a couple charts? The overage on the, the excess we had from, yeah. So 190 was transferred out, was that to, did we close a bond out? Do you remember?
That $195,000 went into the fund for, not the temp financing fund again, just like it has been historically.
So where'd the, where'd the, where'd the rest go?
The $411,000 would have stayed in the general fund to keep our fund balance at the 40% rate that we needed to keep it at for general fund expenditures that happened in 2023 that we budgeted for. So as part of this audit, we aren't seeing 2023's budgeted expenditures.
And we counted that in the 2023?
Correct. And so looking at 2022's fund balance, we only want to, we want to make sure we're looking at 2023's expenditures when we're looking at the 40% number. So the number that Matt had mentioned earlier, the 45% is based on 2022's number. And if we increase expenditures year over year or have more expenditures in the following year, we want to make sure we're able to cover 40% of that following year budget, not the current year budget, so.
Sure.
So that $411,000 didn't go away, it just stayed in the general fund. That's why you see an uptake of that purple bar there on the bar right column.
Yeah, fund balance went from 2.2 million to begin the year to 2.6, so there's a $400,000.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I had one other, one other question. This is on page 16 of your report. Under liabilities, we have got a line here that says due to other governments. And it's like 1.1 million. What other governments are we, are we talking about here?
That would be likely going to be the city of Rogers or the city of Maple Grove, who paid them connection fees that happen in that part of town. And we have to remit those payments that we get from developers to them. So when we say due to other governments, it just makes the means that at the end of the year, we owed that other government an amount of money. I think it was roughly 1.1 million. I don't remember exactly off the hand which one was which, but I think Maple Grove was a little higher than Rogers was. But like 600 grand to Maple Grove and $400,000 for Rogers or something like that.
Okay.
You still have the cash in hand.
Correct.
So we quickly count that as part of your fund balance of your money. So we have a liability to pay that and show that you still have to give that money away.
So we accumulate those charges and just write them out one check at the end of the year?
Correct. Well, we do the quarterly ones for Maple Grove, as you were saying. Well, Rogers, we don't have a lot of them. The one that was there would have been Greco, the one with Greco building. So that's, we don't have a lot of Rogers ones, like I said. But the one we did have was the Greco building.
Okay. Yeah, other, other governments is a little vague to me.
Yeah, correct. It's a conglomerate basically. Give me anything state, county or municipality.
Not foreign countries?
Not foreign countries, not yet.
I'll sleep better. And the last thing I wanted to say is I also picked up that we, we reduced our long-term debt in 2022 by 2.6 million.
That's the payment we make, yeah. It's a big one.
Yeah.
If you do get the foreign country emails, please don't respond to those.
It was Taiwan, right? Isn't that where you're going?
No, Africa, yeah.
No ransom notes to be paid when you're gone?
No ransom notes to be paid when you're gone either?
Keep it.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
Without a motion of second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on to item F. Heritage Day request. What's the request? I didn't see anything on that.
Yep, because I didn't get anything from the Heritage Day Committee. So mayor members of council, what we had talked about, we talked with the Heritage Day kind of coordinator, individual who said that they were looking for a request from city council. And I said, just let us know what that is. And then I never heard anything from them.
So I'm not hearing that, I'm hearing the opposite, that you guys are waiting for some direction.
Sure.
So what's going on?
Yep, correct. So like I said, we would need to know what we're requesting basically from the council.
Well, so, yeah.
Dayton community fund.
So my understanding is the Friday evening activities, Teresa used to do those.
Yep, correct.
And I don't know where that's going. Is that, is that the discussion?
Part of this, yep, would be what do we want to do on Friday night? It sounds like, I knew that part, but I do not know about Saturday. So the Friday night request would have been what is going to be for a movie again, paid for by the city. We already have the credit, like I said, from last year to, yeah, last year. And then with bounce house again on Friday night, and this is all going to be planned to be held at Elsie Stevens Park up on the river. That also has a credit from last year as well because that they postponed. So those two credits and then basically I believe it would be police services on that evening for directing traffic and monitoring that area. But that is what the request is for Friday night that I'm aware of.
Did you guys come to agreement on the fire, on the fireworks or where's that at?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that one.
They always skipped last year and it was there the year before and I don't.
Those are two years ago. I personally don't have an issue. The only one that may would be Gary because of the fire portion of things. But I think it's just more a funding aspect of things for the fireworks.
And Teresa allocated that or had she?
There is allocations for dollars to be able to help out with that, or should say activities related to Heritage Day are in, within the budget. So yes.
Okay.
That's something that the council would like to do and participate in. And then that would be the request, but again, I don't formally know.
So who's responsible for like bringing, like the Diamond Lake Improvement Association is coming up? Who's responsible for coming in and kind of updating? I feel like we're, there's like a one-sided conversation here. I guess I just don't know, like, should somebody be here to chat with us on this and like have a conversation or what?
That would be a true statement.
Yes.
Okay, I'm legitimately asking, I have no clue.
Except we typically year to year get this done, you know, behind the scenes. I mean, with staff and the Lions. And then there's an application request submitted at some point.
Correct.
I may or may not know most of what's intended, I guess, is the correct word.
Typically would be the Heritage Day Community Foundation should have come, or would normally come in and make the request. I would think formally would be the request of thoughts. That's what we had as staff with Marty and myself. We had a conversation with the community foundation coordinator. And we asked them to come in and talk to the council formally to say, what are you asking for basically for assistance?
Okay, so we're talking about, let's just be clear here, we're talking about my wave.
That's correct.
Yeah. My understanding was you guys were waiting for direction from council. So I'm not sure exactly, because typically that application is just submitted. I mean, the same with the car show, it's the same with the other, they just submit an application.
They did submit that, yep, so that was submitted.
Okay.
Application was submitted formally. Like I said, I was expecting like a list of here's what I'm looking for assistance with.
So I think we've had a historic issue that's kind of been like the elephant in the room and never talked about. I think we tried having this conversation last year and it was just, let's move forward with the event because the way it's always been done, let's just do it and get it done because planning hadn't happened. I think that staff struggles with having a different organization coming in and being responsible for, not responsible, contributing to an event that they have no say in. So I think we're looking for council to give the direction on what say they would like to have being that it is very much so city-funded without being advertised as a city event or without taxpayers even knowing that they're really paying for this event that is put on by the foundation or by the Lions. But like city equipment is used. That was just like a push through of like, let's just make this happen. It's never been discussed, it's never been council-driven. I think if there's actually a city event that wants to take place, I think we need to have that direction. And then I think staff needs to work on that. And I think it could be a partnership with a foundation, but I think that specifically public safety may need a bigger role on location or things because we should have insurance and safety things in place where we don't currently have that now.
It is insured.
It's just we're required to show up and put in the hours and have no say over the event.
But how is that different than any other, say the bunts? Do you do any planning for that event?
We.
The answer is no.
We historically charged them.
Yep.
Because that had been the direction that should happen with every organization until we had a new council that decided that for nonprofit, that we just wanted to contribute our police hours, so it's not tracked. So yes, police does do traffic, they help with traffic. But they don't. There's not more involvement than that. They don't use city generators, they don't use city equipment. They don't use city staff, meaning like our entire public works department. They don't have setup of a park, it's on a personal property. It's not aftermath cleanup of more people as well.
Can I ask three questions?
It's slightly different.
So I'm curious, are we playing this year's or are we playing next year's Dayton Heritage Day?
This year's.
Is it normal, like, don't most of these plan these out more than a year in advance? Is it normal for us to plan it out three months? Like, what does Rogers and Champlin do?
Typically. It's always been this, no one wants to talk about this.
Okay, so Rogers and Champlin, Rockin' Rogers and Father Hanipen Days, have we reached out to them and seen how far in advance they plan theirs?
They usually have a meeting after the event to plan the next year.
So they're planning theirs a year in advance?
Yep.
Okay.
Historically, Heritage Day was done maybe two months in advance.
Okay.
Maybe. And this year it was started earlier in spite of, what I'm hearing is two different things. So I think what we should maybe do is, I don't know if you want to have a work session with this or because I don't think everybody's.
I just want to have direction from the council of what the ask was. And that's why the formal request, I was requesting a formal request of what are you looking for for assistance? Because as staff, we just go with, this is what's typically been done, but there's never really been like a formal request of, can you help with setup? Can you head up with, help with takedown? Can we borrow generators? There's never been like a formal request, it's just more.
And we never have.
Correct. And that's what I was looking for when I had a conversation with.
We can quantify that.
Yep, correct. And again, I'm not saying that it was, I was expecting her to be here tonight.
Oh, see, I wasn't. And in fact, she asked me and I said, no, just turn in the application. So I didn't understand what this conversation was. We've never had this kind of a problem in the past, so that's why I'm not sure what.
I don't think it's a problem.
I don't think it's a problem. I think it's more that we've never come to the conclusion.
It's never been a budgeted line item. The council has never given direction to contribute to this. We just last minute push it through because it needs to get done.
This might help. And I think I know most of what is intended. Friday night, roughly at Stevens Park, 5 o'clock, you start the bounce houses. Zach and I talked about it, adding a bounce house for the little guys because what I've seen in the past is eight, nine-year-old kids get on the bounce house and they bounce a little three-year-old right off the damn, right off the bounce house. So I suggested another bounce house for the little guys, three and under. Zach said we can easily do that. I was going to donate mine, but there's some liability issues, so he'd just as soon go a different direction. The movie in the park is all reserved, the city's already spending that. And whether or not that movie can be changed to something else, because we've already done Encanto one time.
I think there's like licensing issues.
Because of the license.
I understand that, but maybe we can call that guy and say, hey, John, can we pick a different movie? Because we've already done that one. I don't know.
We have not done.
I personally don't care.
It didn't happen, so the movie never got played.
Okay.
It's a new movie.
I think the new request is $5,000 for the fireworks, just so everybody is aware, that's what it costs. Two years ago when we did it, the Lions paid $4,000, it cost a little more. Or I asked for a budget of $5,000. The guy said, yes, we can do that. So that will get us 18 minutes or so of fireworks.
And when, so like Father Hanipen Days, who pays for the fireworks with that? Is it the Lions? Is it?
The city does.
Most cities get sponsors or the city does it.
Yeah, so in Champlin, again, every community varies a little bit.
I'm just trying to understand, I don't know.
Champlin essentially gives the money to the, donates and says, here's the money and you can.
Here's X amount, spend it how you want.
You can do what you want.
And I believe they also run their shed fest.
Sure.
Given that it's.
Rogers does the same thing. Rogers does the same thing exactly.
They have a fan in their public workshop.
Okay.
So Rogers is the same thing, they just donate the money and say $5,000 or $10,000, here you are.
I believe it's their same equivalent activities director that does a lot of it.
Now with the Heritage Day itself, Saturday, that is mainly put on by DCF, which Lisa pretty much handles all of that. And those costs are roughly $6,000 to $7,000 for that day. So both of these events, two years ago, were roughly about $12,000 that the Lions and DCF sponsored.
Is that including the cost of the additional police coverage?
Nope, 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 nope. That's just actual expenditures that people are writing checks for.
How do we get the county to agree to close the county road? They don't work with us on anything.
That's a question we just don't ask.
The question is Paul, the answer is you don't. What do you mean you don't? I'll ask for permission.
Oh.
Well, so what, at least a piece of this that we seem to be missing is the formal commitment by the city through the council to say, this is the event we want to support because we can have one, is that correct?
Have one, that's correct.
That the city can support and, you know, we don't have the Father Hanipen Days, this is what.
What do you mean you can have one?
Yeah, so the state center allows for a festival related to the heritage of the community and it's one of them.
So then there's certain loopholes, like a liquor license doesn't have to be paid for, it can be issued by the city. Because you have a budgeted line item and this is for the community.
So how does Champlin do two?
I don't know.
I think they just do two. I think that's really what it boils down to. Because I'm not sure how you tie a shed fest to heritage. But you do tie it, I believe there's also an exception in there for art or something. Anyways.
Okay, well, we have one.
Yep.
Right. And so I feel like we should, and I don't know quite how to state this because we don't have a dollar amount, I guess, but that we should have a motion saying that, yes, we do as a city want to support this.
We have in the past repeatedly.
And that it should be, since we're in budget season anyway, that this should be a line item on the budget so that we don't have to have the discussion every year. I mean, outside of the budget discussion.
All of that helps planning much, much better. Because it's really hard to throw it together in two months, three months.
So help me out with saying what I want to make a motion around. Because we've got, we've got costs for these two days right there, kind of known from history. And then we've got soft costs, which is the city's time for fire and staff help and so on that, you know, should be accounted for in this.
We could, I think we could easily put together a small work session to get all the parties involved.
Do we need a work, I mean, it sounds like.
I don't think we need it.
I don't think a work session. It sounds like Zach's going to talk to whoever's plenty. If it's Scott or your wife or whoever, they just need to sit down in a room together for an hour and plan it out. Like, I don't know if we need all of us there to then.
I don't disagree with that. A work session doesn't necessarily have to have us there, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy to, again, I was expecting a formal request that I thought we had talked about. And I think Marty was in the room, so I think that would have been requested from myself, but maybe I was miscommunicated with or I miscommunicated that as well, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I'm looking for something from the council.
So we don't know. So I'll make a motion that we as a city value and want to support the Dayton Heritage Days as, you know, as our ongoing community festival. And I think that with hard and soft costs, we should allocate $15,000 for that effort and that we should be budgeting for this going forward. I didn't know I was going to get arrested for that.
So hard and soft, you mean that like the cost plus the time and labor and all that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, do we have more discussion on that?
I'll just say, I like the idea of either, in my opinion, either the city says, here's your $15,000 number used, I think, $15,000, includes time, labor, everything, do with it as you please and plan the event to another team, or it goes to the city and the city just plans it. I think, to me, what I've heard, brought this up a couple times now, it's almost like having two different parties involved in this seems to make things more, there's no like clear definition of duties. So I would say going forward, as you think about this, we should think about that piece as well of like, if the, I'm going to get the name wrong and I apologize, the Dayton Heritage Foundation. Dayton Community Foundation, sorry, decides that's what we want to do, I'm fine with that. It doesn't matter to me who does it, I think it's a great event and we should support.
I'm just going to add that $15,000 is more than enough and we won't need that much money, but whatever.
It's not all cash, though.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
Police officers are time and a half, at what, $70 an hour, Paul?
Pretty close.
For time and a half?
Probably.
Probably. So at an all-day event, you know, that adds up quick, so.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
That wasn't that hard.
We have the Diamond Lake Association with us tonight that is going to have a budget ask as well. You certainly can. Let me get it up for you. So yours is going to be, not a PowerPoint, why is it not on here?
Go top ten.
So yeah, you can just scroll down, whatever, you want to go to the next slide.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Charles Wagner. 17611 North Diamond Lake Road.
Can you do us a favor? Can you stand in front of that bike right there? Thank you.
And if you want, you can either take turns or there's a bike there if you want to sit. Yeah, go ahead.
Charles Wagner, 17611 North Diamond Lake Road, Dayton, Minnesota.
Good evening, my name is Mark Byrne. I live at 13871 Longdale Lane North.
We are representing Diamond Lake Improvement Association tonight and we're here to ask you for 2024 funds to support the lake improvement. Diamond Lake, as you guys know, is the gem of Dayton. Nature enjoyment, boating, fishing, swimming, new boat launch, right, Paul? That you get cleaned up from somebody dumped a bunch of junk there earlier this year. But it's, the DNR did a nice job on that. We appreciate that. Our purpose is to support and conduct nonpartisan research, education, and informational activities regarding the lake, to increase public awareness of Diamond Lake, to improve the lake quality and habitat, to prevent lake quality deterioration. We are a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3), staffed and supported by community members, neighbors, friends, I guess. We do a cleanup on two areas. We do South Diamond Lake Road. We, uh, we do a cleanup on, uh, two areas, we do South Diamond Lake Road, up to the public, the old Public Works Building, and, uh, we do, uh, Longdale Lane, um, twice a year, we do the cleanup on both of those properties, or those roads. We, we, uh, we participate in the Heritage Day Parade, I think you call it something new this year, but uh, we've always, uh, we've always had a float or participated in that. Started out, um, in twenty eleven with, uh, the curly leaf pond weed, and, uh, the lake was so bad at that time, I can remember we could almost, uh, walk across the lake, we could, we couldn't kayak in it, we couldn't use a boat in it. It was like you see in the picture, it was absolutely, um, nasty. Now with, uh, with the treatment we've done since, since then, um, the lake is almost pristine in comparison, I mean, it's, it's, you can boat on it, you can kayak. It's very nice. The last four years, um, the DNR gave us a grant to treat the entire lake, where in previous years we didn't have, we only could do a percentage of the lake. And that was an experimental, uh, chemical that the DNR wanted to see what the results were of that. And, uh, turned out, I think, to be pretty, pretty good. So here you can, uh, you can see twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, we did a treatment of sixty point five acres, or what the DNR allowed us was a fifteen percent of the lake. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, we had a special permit from the DNR to treat the entire lake, four hundred and five acres. And then this year, we, uh, the DNR, uh, had us revert back to the, uh, previous, uh, fifteen percent of which we only, that, I have got a correction there, we did forty-five point one acres, not forty acres. So the treatment is, is helping tremendously. You can tell by the, uh, actually, if you've been on the lake, you can tell how the clarity is better and, uh, it's actually very, very usable. So we're going to continue with spot treatments where needed, um, with the invasive plant species, curly leaf pond weed. We get a, um, we have a study done every year before we do treatment. James Johnson comes out and takes a look at it from a freshwater scientific. And, uh, he tells us where we need to treat, where we need to treat the lake. So we, uh, connect him with, uh, PLM and then they, uh, there's a map coming up here that will show you, where we treated, so additional future project considerations that we're, uh, looking at for the lake. Uh, we had a fish kill this, this spring, um, not as bad as we had in twenty twelve, but there was a substantial amount of, uh, dead fish in the lake, some carp that were pretty good size. And, uh, so we looked at a way to contain the carp from getting into the lake, and we looked at, uh, working with the DNR, the fisheries agent or for this area, uh, I talked with him and he said that you guys might want to consider putting a carp barrier in Diamond Creek. So, um, I'll share that information with you guys, I've, I've got some information on that. Um, it's not very, um, technical, they take inch and a, inch and a half PVC and it's driven in every inch and a half across the creek, and that's it. But we did, we have to determine where we would put that because I don't know whose property or how that aligns with the city and the DNR and all that business, so. That, the cost of that was around five or six thousand, wasn't it, Mark?
Correct.
And it wasn't fair, we thought maybe we'd get some Boy Scouts together to put the thing up because it's pretty, it's not technical.
Where does that come into the lake?
Um, it comes, well, it goes out of the lake, um, by the old, uh, on the south, on the southeast, by the new land.
Right near the access.
Yeah, the new access, if you've gone in there, that Diamond Creek kind of snakes around that, and then goes out into Elm Creek, and that's where the carp come from, they come up from the Champlin, and they go as far as they can go and they end up in Diamond Lake, so, um, we'd like to stop that if we can. The, uh, next item, as we talked about, is, uh, stocking fish, I, I called the, um, fisheries guy from Hannibal, you know, from the DNR, and he said that we should actually put, um, bass in that lake because there's a lot of bull heads, the bass eat the bull heads. So that would be an advantage, um, to keep that rough fish at bay with, with putting the, uh, with putting the bass in there. Carp netting, I think that, uh, that's a possibility, but I think with the barrier that we talked about, that would eliminate the need for that. Aeration, we talked to, again, we talked with the DNR about that, and we want to get a presentation from someone that does that to see what the, the benefits, you know, the positives or the negatives of doing the aeration. That's probably something that we would have to get together with the city to talk about how we maintain that and, and that type of thing. Mark has done a little bit of research on that, but more to come on that.
Is that what the fish kill was attributed to?
Yeah, no oxygen, and last year, you know, it was, the lake was so, it was over two feet down last year. And, uh, so no oxygen, it just.
Hit every snowpack, early snowpack.
Yeah, or did, the, uh, weeds didn't get any sunlight from all the snowpack, so the fish ran out of oxygen, they died. Um, we talked about another, uh, possible treatment for the algae blooms in, uh, late August, September. If you guys have been down by the lake, you know that it's pretty, pretty ripe. And, uh, we're gonna, we're, uh, working with PLM on that as well to see what we can, see if they can help us, um, treat those algae blooms in the fall. Or when we should do it, we, we rely on them. So you can see back where we started in, uh, twenty eleven and twenty twelve with the curly leaf had overtaken the lake. And, uh, this is the treatment that we did in, uh, May, and you can see that it was done along, um, on the southwest corner in that bay is where they found a lot of curly leaf. Around the island that's in the center in between, and then there's some on, uh, where the houses are on the, uh, north side, and then into the Magnus Bay, we treated that as well. Magnus has, um, has got some canoes and kayaks that they have for their members to use, and we want to make sure that we cleaned up that area so that could be used. So we're asking again, uh, we appreciate the partnership with the city, I think it's, it's made a huge impact on, on the lake. And, uh, for twenty twenty-four, we're, our treatment costs, we're estimating, uh, to be around fifteen thousand dollars. Um, could be a little bit more than that with, with the possibility of the treating the algae blooms in the fall, but it is just a, an estimate that, uh, we, we have to throw out. So we're asking for the same thing we asked for last year, um, for your generosity.
Does that total cost include, um, like, the PVC pipes and everything, or is that just the curly leaf?
No, that's just, that's just the curly leaf, the PVC, that carp barrier was about, like I said, five or six thousand dollars, we're thinking get some Boy Scouts together and do that, so. But, um.
Haven't you been at ten thousand for many years?
It's been quite a, quite a few years. Now, do you have a total cost, you don't have any estimate from the DNR yet on what they're going to contribute?
Correct. Correct, no, that, that's a crap shoot, that's a lottery now, so that, anything we get from the DNR is like a blessing.
Gravy, yeah.
So, I mean, we're.
Do we, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, so related to that, I know, I was on the Parks Commission for a number of years, and we heard for quite a long time that the watershed district was doing a study that included Diamond Lake. And I don't know if that ever came to any conclusion, or if there was any, any projects that came out of that that.
I've been hearing that for fifteen years.
We, we attended, we attended a lot of those meetings, and right here, Marty was in the meeting. And we never got any conclusion from, um, any of those meetings or, or how they ended up, Mark was here, Marty, you were here, and.
I think they may have an update on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was actually a sub watershed assessment for, so it's a whole sub drainage area to French Lake, Diamond Lake, Diamond Creek, uh, essentially, that was completed and accepted, that study. There, there was a fish study completed with it, where our, our crews went in and they, they shocked the lake and counted the fish and do an inventory of it, so there were some different steps, it was more so, uh, BMPs that could be implemented across the entire watershed to improve water quality, um, one of the recommendations was a lake study specific to Diamond Creek, but that has not been initiated.
Also going to do a loading study, is that, did that?
The what, I'm sorry?
Phosphorus loaded.
Oh, um, I'd have to go back in the, in the data for it, um, that is the impairment is phosphorus.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, chloride as well.
Is this an item that's on the budget every year or no?
It's been there for quite a few years.
It's been stuck at ten and I think I'd be fine with bumping it because it's, it's our lake.
The only issue that, do we know how much of the lake we're treating this year for twenty twenty-four?
We did, uh, forty-five acres this year.
For twenty twenty-three, this is for twenty twenty-four.
Well, twenty, we don't know until they, until they do, yeah, until they do the study.
Yeah, when we do the elimination study, they come back, freshwater society, guys, this is what we suggest.
Yep, they actually take a double-sided rake and they go out in a boat, they throw the rake and they pull, pull the rake, and then they pull up what the weeds that come up on the rake, and that's, that's how technical it is, it's not technical, they, they pull it and they get, and they'll count whatever, um, natural weeds or curly leaf, wherever they find it, and that's where they, they GPS, they GPS mark it, and that's where PLM will do the treatment.
And are they planning on doing that this summer yet?
Um, yeah, the study will be done, we haven't, uh, James Johnson hasn't, uh, done the study yet, so, from freshwater scientific. But he, he goes out and does the study, and he'll tell, he'll tell us where we're at.
Until we really know where we are, I, I don't have any problem continuing the ten thousand. Um, but I think that ten thousand has been kind of based on, for the last four or five years, on treating the entire lake. We don't know if this year we're only treating, treating forty acres or not.
I think it was treated, the entire lake was treated just once, isn't it?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years in a row, the whole lake?
The whole lake, yep, yes.
Okay.
That's when, that's when there was really a handle gotten on the curly leaf. So I guess to me, until you know really what you're doing, uh.
Well, uh, uh, on the other hand, there's other projects that we're looking at as well. So it's not just the curly leaf, we're looking at fish stocking and doing the carp barrier, um, that treatment for, um, the algae blooms, that type of thing.
That carp barrier, I think, was looked at almost ten, fifteen years ago, and I don't remember where it ended up, but, I mean, I think in conjunction with that, you had to have a kill, you had to have some way to remove the carp that were in there, I, I thought.
You would, yep.
Well, they, the DNR didn't, didn't say that.
Okay.
They didn't, but he, but the, I talked to him and he said, well, you guys, you're going to have a fish kill this year, and we did. And he said, that's the, now.
The time to do it.
Now, after that fish kill, because the run is already, the carp have already made their run, now is the time to put that barrier in for next year, so they can't get back up, uh, get back up in the lake. So there's kind of a timing, timing issue.
Sure.
It would surprise me that they can actually get through that creek, uh, other than minnows, but, um, I don't know if anybody's up, I've walked the park there in front of my house quite often, and it would shock me that a, a three-pound carp could get through that creek.
Well, we have dead ones on the shore.
I know, I know, I understand that, but they're living in the, they're living in the lake, so.
I've seen them coming down that creek.
Have you? Yeah, down by the river, it's just a whole slew.
Oh, yeah, they, they're just like, uh,
Crazy.
A run, I mean, that's where they do it, that's where they go, they go as far as they can up to, up the creek and that's, Diamond Lake is the end of the line, so.
Okay, with the increase of what they want to do, it is a city lake and everything costs more due to inflation over the past few years, I don't see a problem increasing it a little bit, but I also, if we aren't treating the whole lake, we were paying the ten thousand for the whole lake and now we aren't, we weren't to see what, what we, if they really need the full ten thousand this year at all. Because if we're treating one-tenth of the lake, the cost I would expect is going to be one-tenth, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, I don't know how that works.
When, when do you guys find out, when you, uh, know what the DNR is going to do, or how much, how much they're going to let you treat?
Well, they let us treat fifteen percent.
Tony's asking.
Oh, oh, you mean, we, I won't.
Talking twenty-four.
Twenty-three is gone already.
Okay, so, um, after, uh, James Johnson does the study, we'll have a pretty good idea.
This year or next, when does that happen?
Uh, it'll be this year.
Okay.
I think, I think we should have you ask you to come back, and I don't think it's going to be any less than ten thousand, but.
I think it's a budget timing.
Yeah.
Do you know what month it gets done?
Um, I'd have to look, look into that to see.
I think they have to ask ahead of time to actually make the budget.
Yeah. But in years past, before we treated the entire lake, the ten thousand was the number two, so.
You can make it higher if you'd like now, and we can remove it down lower once we hear the actual number, that's always possible as well, but.
Or you can increase it later, it doesn't matter.
You cannot increase it later if it's after the budget set for the lake.
No, I understand that, but, yeah.
If it's through September, like I said, I wouldn't suggest going higher, if you're looking at something higher, then go higher now. And we can always lower it down later on during the year, if it's ten thousand, maybe like a ten, but.
Sir, if you want to come up with a second first.
Yeah, or send in. Here's my thought, Scott, is I think if we're thinking long-term, I think a lot of the property on this lake hasn't developed and won't be developed for a long time, let's just be clear, based on how it's, where it's at right now. But I think that this lake will drive significant property values for the city, which will be revenue that we're sinking money in now for the hope to help have a lake that is usable and desirable for significant valued homes on the lake in the future, so that's where my head is at, as to why it makes sense to try to get the carp out now, because that, don't hit this the wrong way, I don't think it's you, I, it, it might not be successful the first time around, those kind of things, and so, so that's where my head's at, is like, this isn't going to be like a one-time thing and done, it's going to be a constant investment into this lake that hopefully will eventually, a couple of decades on the road, pay dividends for the city.
Yeah, it's never going to be a super fishery because it's only four, five, six feet deep.
Yep, yeah, so that, that's where, where I'm at, I don't, I don't know what the number should be, which is why I struggle with, if we are going to increase, would increase it to, I don't know.
Where does the additional money come from, does it come from the residents that are in the association or?
Yeah, we, we have an ask for the, um, for the membership of two hundred dollars a year.
How many members do you have?
Twenty-two.
So you're getting roughly forty-four hundred bucks.
Do you guys, do you have projects right now you've put off because of funding?
Well, the fish stocking, the carp barrier, um, and the alum treatment, we haven't pulled the trigger on any of those yet.
DNR doesn't do the fish stocking? Because I know years ago, years ago, we talked about that.
DNR only stocks walleyes.
Yep.
Really?
So, um, they did stock walleyes this spring, but they will net them out in the fall, but they never get them all, so.
They use it as like a fishery, right?
It's a, it's a rearing box.
It's a rearing.
Yeah.
Would they be okay putting bass in there or some other fish?
They won't do it.
No, 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 would they be okay if you wanted to, let me phrase the question, sorry.
When I talked to the fisheries, um, guy, he, he gave me, uh, names and contact information of who was authorized to do the stocking.
Okay.
So, yeah, we got all the, you know, i's dotted and the t's crossed with that, so, um, got a quote, we got a couple of quotes coming in for that, so.
Bad besser, but they, they can live in just about zero oxygen, they taste like mud, eat mud. The guys like to fish them, so.
Okay.
But are you, are you comfortable with bumping it up fifteen percent, ten percent from the ten?
I, I'm okay personally with fifty.
Fifty percent or fifteen K?
Because there's, there's, there's projects that you probably get done. The stocking, the carp thing has been needed for a long time. Had that thing been in place, um, this last fish kill might have waved them out.
Right.
I, it's an extra five K.
It's the carp that I give.
Does this come out of parks?
Uh, this comes out of what we call the contingency department. It's just like a separate little area of the.
Okay.
We don't have any central contingency. There's not a contingency. It's just always a budget at a ten thousand dollars. So there's historical data there, but it's always been ten grand.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, make a motion.
Uh, sure, we'll make a motion that we go fifteen K to the Diamond Lake Association.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I just didn't want to take your idea. That's why I asked if you wanted to motion it.
Thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, item H, um, least fire budget.
Who's going first?
I'll first.
You guys flip a quarter or?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Right on the bottom here?
Yep.
Yep. Do I need to close the other one or no?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Click to the bottom, right corner there and click on the button next to that, you might assign up a little higher.
Looks like a old school.
There we go.
Ta-da.
I'm under control. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I think this is my first opportunity to present the operational budget. I know we worked on CIP last year after uh, my arrival. And take this opportunity along with budget to try to give a little bit of education from the department's perspective. Um, I think what happens is often you get to see the end result, the big red truck going down the road. Um, and all the work that goes behind it to make it go down the road, if you will. So calls for service for the last three years, um, from twenty twenty-one, this is the best data that we have outside of, due to our records management system. We do have paper documents. Um, it takes a little bit to go through that, but with the record management system, you'll see that. We had three hundred and sixty-five calls in twenty twenty-one. Last year, we moved up to four hundred and seventy-two calls. And then as of right now, year-to-date, we're sitting at about two hundred and fifty-one calls. Thing that's kind of interesting is we're about fifty-fifty on medicals and all of the fire responses.
What, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what, what qualifies as a fire call?
So anything outside of a medical, uh, councilman fish shot. It's grass fire or rescue. That's just kind of how it's broken down within the records management system. So three-twenty-ones are medicals and then kind of everything else. It's for in first of the National Fire Incident Response Database that we report to. That's kind of what gets broken down. Um, it's difficult to see this, but it's kind of a heat map, um, of our calls, um, by hour and day of week from twenty twenty-one to present. Um, what you'll find is, is that for the last two and a half years, uh, Monday at three P M is nineteen calls.
Sunday.
Sunday, sorry, Sunday at three P M. And then our busier days followed by that are Wednesday at four P M and Tuesday at seven A M. Um, the problem with that for us is, of course, that is when most firefighters are commuting to and from work. So that becomes problematic from a response perspective. Between those hours, I broke down to, it doesn't show on here specifically, but um, because right now, the way the organization operates is all firefighters are required to make twenty-five percent of all fire calls. And that's twenty-four hours a day. It's not equitable per se because when you're gone at work, you're still responsible for something that you can't respond to because you have your job. But that's a system that's been put in place. We've talked a little bit about it over the last year, um, since I've been here to look at other aspects of breaking that down into maybe a six-hour response time so that maybe it doesn't, it impacts people less. But the caveat to that is it's still a percentage basis. So they have less calls to respond to, still having to make that twenty-five percent. We can adjust that twenty-five percent within the organization down. But as you'll see, as we continue to move forward in the statistics that I put together, um, that could be problematic or it is problematic. So between oh-six-hundred and eighteen-hundred, we have about six hundred and twenty-four calls for this period of time, twenty twenty-one through present day today. Uh, January, that is, of twenty twenty-one. And then uh, we have four hundred and sixty-two nighttime calls. So you have twenty-six percent greater call percentage during daytime hours versus the nighttime. Um, availability of daytime responders are a little bit better than what they used to be after COVID, but still considerably less. Um, we're probably right now, to give some statistics, in twenty twenty-one, we had three-point-six-three on average responding during the day. In twenty twenty-two, we had three-point-nine-two firefighters and today we have four-point-eight-six firefighters that are responding during that daytime response time. This is just kind of a heat map, kind of gives you a general idea. Um, again, difficult to see. But on the left, you can kind of see what you would think is typical. Old town, kind of where we're at here around City Hall and then some of the newer developments, the Greens and um, down eighty-one in Brockton um, are kind of the hotspots, if you will, for calls. So department participation, um, over the past two and a half years, again, same uh, timeframe, January through today. Average number of hours worked by a firefighter have doubled from fifteen hours to thirty hours per month. Average number of firefighters responding to a call, if you collectively look at that for a twenty-four hour period, is five-point-two. And then average number of firefighters responding to a structured fire is seven. That comes into play into this picture here. So this is NFPA seventeen-twenty. Actually, in this, there's seventeen-twenty and there's seventeen-ten. Um, seventeen-ten is for full-time organizations, seventeen-twenty response for organizations such as ourselves. Indicates that, and this is based on population, if I take our twenty-five-point-four square miles and we divide that by roughly ten thousand of a population, that means we have three hundred and ninety-three residents or people within a square mile. So with that being said, um, we should be responding um, to any significant fires or structural fire um, within fourteen minutes with six people eighty percent of the time. As you can see in this picture, this holds true regardless, full-time or, or paid-on-call. Um, six people or as I said in the earlier slide, seven people is not adequate to put out a fire. Fifteen unseen. If you think of a full-time organization, let's talk about maybe Minneapolis or somebody of that nature. They're going to have a, what they call a three-in-one or two-in-one, I'm sorry, two engines, a ladder and a battalion chief. That's a minimum. So on those trucks, they're probably running three people, maybe four. Um, so that gives you three, six, nine, um, still even with them, they're a little bit short. So they end up calling another battalion in. So they end up doing a second alarm assignment where they bring in additional resources to help extinguish the fire. We obtained that here in Dayton, but it's dependent upon our mutual aid partners. If Rogers or Champlin, if they don't have, you know, like this weekend being a, a Fourth of July weekend, a lot of people might be out of town. Um, so that can be difficult on holiday weekends or if a storm has gone through and there's a lightning strike. Um, actually, we helped Rogers out last week, earlier this week with that, over the weekend with a lightning strike. Um, we went and responded to help them out in that capacity. Um, so that number of seven firefighters out of the twenty-five that we have is very nominal, nominal to put out a fire. And the reality is too, this talks about a ladder. Obviously, we don't have a ladder, um, yet, Scott. But the reality is you need to throw in those extra people when we're doing um, drafting and we have to bring up our own water supply. Is other additional people that are needed. So this is a bare minimum, if you will. People respond. Zach and I had this conversation earlier today, just to better educate. You know, we have forty-five minute bottles and forty-five hundred PSI. It doesn't mean that they get to go fight fire for forty-five minutes. The work cycle is probably a third to enter, to get where you need to go. A third doing what you need to do, so maybe eight to ten minutes. And then we want to make sure we have a reserve of a third to get out. Ideally, I operate on that they need to have at least fifty percent ability to exit the building in case conditions have changed behind them. A hole in the floor, whatever the case may be. So based on the numbers of firefighters we currently have today, um, you know, it causes a significant issue for us if we do have a significant structured fire. So what does the department needs? Full-time deputy chief, projected cost is with benefits, hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand and five dollars. And a part-time fire inspector, projected cost forty-four-nine-thirty-seven. Can I move this or not?
Yeah, um, so you can minimize that too, the one, yep.
So why? Um, current fire chief job description exceeds the number of attainable tasks that can be handled by one FTE. We talked about, I know when they did the study before and we've had the conversation and I understand um, from the council's perspective that that's how it was sold. But the reality is there, there's just not enough hours in a week or a day to do training, to try to do with new inspections um, or even current expect inspections that we'll talk about here in a minute. Um, emergency management type tasks. Um, I can't be the, I'm the one-man bandit show at the moment. And it's not um, working out as well as we would like. The department calls for service continue to grow fifteen to twenty percent annually. Um, saw that in the first slide. And calls for service, as I indicated earlier, between six and six. There's twenty-six percent greater than eighteen to oh-six and during the, in the daytime, we don't have that many responders available. We have more today than we've had, um, but I think a lot of that has to do with um, the ability for people to work from home. So that's been a benefit for us. Continuing on with why, um, stricter federal regulations require more oversight, processes and procedures for annual firefighter training, inspection and maintenance of equipment and the number of firefighters needed to be present for a structured fire. So you kind of hit on that in that previous seventeen-twenty slide about the number of firefighters that are required to least make entry into a structured fire, need to have two in and two out, um, to make sure that we're safe and that's an OSHA mandate. Overwhelming demand on paid-on-call staff to assist with training, maintenance and public education activities that exceed the minimum training requirements in response to calls. So as our calls increase, what we see is that the additional things of maintenance, public education, um, and those things that aren't necessarily measured on a monthly basis, they don't have like a twenty-five percent retained or attached to them. It's difficult to get people to help out, um, just based on work-life balance. I talk a lot about work-life balance, uh, because I've not done a lot of work-life balance in, in my personal life. And I think it's extremely important now, especially for our paid-on-call firefighters. We ask them, we always tell them as leadership in the fire service that your job is first, or your family's first, your job is second and the fire department's stewardship at best. The problem with that is, is that we all carry these little black pagers that go off twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And there's no predictability with that. So what that does is when we told them that their family's first, ultimately the pager gets prioritized because there's a percentage requirement tied to that in order for them to be a member in good standing. So there's pros and cons to the way we operate, if you will. Inability to conduct annual fire inspections or existing commercial properties which aid in maintaining consumer and firefighter safety in an emergency. I am not aware of this community doing current building inspections. So meaning a business that's already existed within the community where the fire department has gone in and done an inspection to make sure that they have exit lighting, their fire extinguishers are in place, they have an exit plan, so forth and so on. Those have never been done, it's my understanding. With our new development, um, in commercial, this is something that is, needs to be done. Um, there's a couple of places that um, I've been to, I've mentioned briefly, won't mention names at the moment because I have not made contact with them. But they're not meeting the conditional use permit type stuff currently. Um, a lot of it has to do with fire code issues as well. Um, but again, there's not enough time in a day to do everything that's required to make the organization run and look at the big picture and try to also look at operations. Additional uh, budget highlights, um, you'll see twenty twenty-three, um, actually that was not amended. I apologize, I didn't take that out. But um, that was the actual budget. Um, proposed for twenty twenty-four is two hundred and four thousand for um, projected increase to probably six hundred and seventy to six hundred and ninety calls. And then added in a four percent pay increase. We appreciate the four-dollar increase that was given by council last year. Um, I think we need to maintain that pay as we continue to move forward, um, based on what the city is offering to um, regular employees. I want to make sure we can pass it on to um, paid-on-call firefighters as well. Um, professional development, twelve-thousand-dollar increase. Um, this is just increased cost for fire one, fire two hazmat and EMT training. They was around fifteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred. Now it's up close to almost two thousand dollars per firefighter. Um, annual service apparatus, um, I've added in, doubled that, um, based on last year's uh, fifteen-thousand-dollar turbo replacement on engine eleven. And then also, um, we have a, bringing in a third party per NFPA nineteen-eleven to make sure that they do our annual maintenance on that. Um, so they'll take um, a little bit from Marty's crew and bringing it back to the fire department and making sure that everything is um, being done per NFPA. Communications, we talked a little bit. Um, that's the increase of adding the thirteen radios fees and lease. Um, just as a reminder, as Chief Engad said, uh, all the MDCs, uh, there's a radio fee with that or light, uh, that we get charged. But the radios have that as well. So I think it's a little over thirty bucks per radio, if I recall, something like that. I have to go back and look, but that's a significant uh, increase in that. And then lastly, uh, just motor fuels based on where we were last year to where we are today, um, probably about a three-thousand-dollar increase. Any questions for me?
One thing that I, I don't understand and, and I probably should by now about the paid-on-call piece. So is, is everybody on call all the time and whoever can respond, responds? There's no schedule to that, is that correct?
Correct, yes. So they all have their pagers, um, right now. And like I said, they're required to make twenty-five percent of all calls regardless of the time of day, which is not equitable. I mean, if Travis goes to work, maybe goes off twenty-six percent time and twenty-six percent more than at night, he's still accountable for those calls. Um, so trying to figure out a means to lessen that burden on nighttime people, the department as a whole. Part of the ability of adding in an inspector and additional deputy chief will minimize that with three people here. Majority of our calls, we're able to, to, to handle and deal with. Obviously, we get bigger calls. We still need to call the Calvary, if you will, in order to take care of that. But yeah, they're on call twenty-four hours a day. They come when they can, um, you know, based on what's going on in their life.
Did they get, wasn't there something of vacation? Did that happen or I forgot, Mr. Freddie?
Yeah, so they did implement, um, this year, um, fourteen days of vacation. Um, did cut, doesn't cost the city anything, if you will, um, but fourteen days of, you know, twelve-hour blocks a time. It's just for a measurement perspective. It's a lot easier to break into twelve hours instead of doing it hour for hour, you know? So people will send in saying, hey, you know, in two hours, I want to go on vacation. Okay? Then take your time and you're not responsible for the timeframe or calls during. for the timeframe, or calls during that timeframe. As a starting place, I figured we'd start with that. There's other ways that we can adjust schedules, but then again, some people, you could reduce it from zero eight, or excuse me, eighteen hundred to oh-six and say, that's your response time. You need to make whatever the percentages we come up with, but then we're shrinking those numbers quite a bit, so then the response rate has to be a lot higher than what it maybe would be if you looked at it from a twenty-four-hour period. So there's different ways to slice the pie and look at it, but at the end of the day, I need at least, if we have a structured fire, we don't have one every day of the week, which I'm perfectly fine with, but in preparing for, I need to have adequate fire, you know, because even during the day, Rogers is light, Champlin is light, the same thing. So that's to kind of bridge some of those gaps a little bit, get somebody there more quickly, you know, versus, you know, I happened to catch one yesterday morning coming in a little bit before seven, and there was a grease fire in the oven, but those usually don't go anywhere, but if it was on the stove, it could have been a different story.
Yeah, just, and again, this is out of my realm, but you know my background, and earlier in my career, I was on call, but it was a rotation.
Right.
When I was on call, I was expected to respond, and when I wasn't on call, not my deal. But fire departments don't generally operate that way?
So the next step, if you will, or I've talked a little bit about it, would be a duty crew model. That's the kind of the progression in the fire service from the paid-on-call model that you see today to a scheduled model. It's somewhere between what we have today and full-time staffing. The problem is, we don't really have the facilities. I don't know what to do with people, if you will, if they were to like, there's a couple ways. I had come up with one system earlier last year where we had a duty crew model. Fundamentally, they would sit, they had the ability to do whatever they wanted to, but they were required, and they were scheduled to respond to the station. They were given a small stipend, I think, I don't remember, Zach, twenty bucks, twenty-five bucks, we talked about something.
Yes, something like that.
There was a small stipend they had for staying within the city in that capacity, and knowing that they were going to respond. Some of the feedback from the fire department or the members of the organization was like, well, I'm not going to sit at home for twenty-five bucks and not be able to leave to go do other activities. And I said, yep, I understand that. The other feedback was, if we did have a station duty crew where we had two or three or four people on staff here, which is a norm for a duty crew model, use Brooklyn Center as example, they run a duty crew model from ten in the morning till ten at night, and they're staffed with two. Those two people, if they need additional resources, then they'll trip out, do an all-call and get more resources, but that's scheduled. And so with the duty crew model, what that does, or what that helps us with, it gets us away from penalizing those that have a daytime job or anything, because what you can assume is, during that timeframe, you're not going to be responsible for your percentage. You would just be responsible, your assumption is that the city's being covered by the two people that are on staff. They go to the calls, they deal with the medicals. If there's a significant call, say extrication or a fire call, we'd have to do an all-call, then you'd be responsible for that. But the times that we do that are very nominal, so it's a good system, but it's just trying to figure out what that looks like. I've tried to come up with a couple things, and the one is staffed. They said that, well, there's nothing for us to do, there's no place to sit and watch TV or do whatever during their time there. Granted, there's things that can be done during that time, but then also throwing it out there of, hey, if you stay at home, we'll give you this, and they're like, well, I'm not going to stay at home for that. I would rather just take my chances and respond to calls when I'm able to. So it's really trying to find what works for the organization.
Do you feel like, sorry, what are you going to ask this question? No. So do you feel like the six A to six P, if you could eliminate that, that would entice more volume at the six P or six P to six A times that?
Yeah, I think it would. That's the biggest thing of trying to provide some staffing to offload that requirement during the day for people where a majority of the organization is at the regular job. Now granted, it shrinks it, but I think then they don't have to worry about in that capacity, you know, during the daytime. Now, that can be, that can be Monday through Friday, that could be Monday through Sunday. I mean, we can make it whatever we want to. You know, maybe duty crew is, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It can be done in small bits and pieces, however the organization thinks it's going to work. The other thing that, that I didn't put in here that we are looking at from the organization is the relief association. So obviously, the city has a liability based on the pension system that's put in place for the city. The pension system, I've been a recipient, it was great during that time, just due to societal changes. It's kind of antiquated. Right now, they're getting thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per year to service based upon being vested at forty percent of five years, and the remaining comes in over the next, up until twenty. We're not seeing twenty-year members anymore. So I gave Zach a different number outside of the one that you've seen tonight, of if the relief association is interested in moving to not having a relief association in exchange for that, they would be paid significantly more per hour, and then they'd be able to do whatever they want with that money. They'd be able to, you know, put maybe half of it into 401K, and they would get their money today as opposed to, you know, twenty years each hour when they turn to fifty.
How does state funding affect that? And if you, so you're saying instead of the pension, you basically get more per hour, which I think is a very smart move. The problem is, I thought there was some impacts to state funding.
No, so what happens is no different than law enforcement, the two percent that comes in, I don't think it's sixty-five thousand, I think, last year.
Yeah, some of that, yep.
That number would come to the city, and the city can utilize that however they wish within that capacity. So we're looking at the number that I'd given Zach, based on thirty-one dollars an hour for a firefighter and thirty-three an hour for an officer. And so that, you know, that also could eliminate in some capacity. And even my discussion with some of the firefighters, I've talked about not having a response requirement, and actually, there's a lot of reluctance, to my surprise, to you. They still wanted something in some capacity because they're afraid that, well, if there wasn't one, maybe their peer to the right or the left might not participate as much as they probably needed to to maintain their skills. So there's, you know, lots of discussions that have been going on right now. The thing that's nice with moving the pension is there's a process. You used to have to approach the state legislature and get that put into the ominous bill and this, all this other kind of extra work, but my understanding, I don't know what it is, I haven't investigated it. Actually, Zach and myself are going to meet with firefighters on July thirty-first for them to make the decision of what direction they want to go. I said, I had no, I had no dog in the fight, but Zach and I want to give you the information on what, however they want to move forward.
So I'm curious, one of the things you brought up is the fact that we haven't done fire inspections on existing buildings. Approximately how many businesses do we have in the city that, that we would do that? Do we have a number, Zach, of approximately businesses in the city, or a way to track that in any way, shape, or form? Or if a business changes hands to know, to go in and do a new inspection and make sure they don't change anything?
Not necessarily at this moment. We do our best with the police department, and we're to try to keep up with business changes and such, but we don't, we don't have like a formal way of keeping track of businesses as they change hands. Obviously, if they're building a new park or remodeling or something, then that would make sense that they would have to come into the city. But if there's someone on their property and somebody else is buying it, there's no way to track that right now, and we don't have any ability to track that.
And how often should we be doing inspections on existing buildings? Like, what's, is there a statute or a law that should be done, or what is standard operating procedure with other places?
In the fire code, there's recommendations, so Mercantile, Rain Tree is an example. That could be done every three years.
Okay.
Some higher hazard facilities that have a fair amount of hazardous materials where we get tier-two reports on, they might have exorbitant amount of propane or diesel or whatever the chemicals.
What, the recycling center, would that, the transfer station, would that qualify for that or no?
It depends. I mean, you know, ideally, in that, like, just bringing in, like, MTL, I'm asking the question as it relates to brush and that. I mean, that's something that we'd want to probably do on an annual basis. It just kind of depends on their hazard classification is what it comes down to.
I'll add that, just for everybody's knowledge, the building I just bought and redid my, my suite, there is an inspection through electrical for the exit signs, but that's just at that time. The city does get that done through.
That's part of your building permit, though.
Correct.
Yeah, but the fire chief.
It is done.
Fire doesn't come in and say, hey, you can't put this here, or hey, we changed a wall, and now we need to mark that on our plan so we know if there's a fire here, that this wall wasn't here before, counter or something.
No, it's more or less for the exit signs and the fire extinguisher. That is a requirement when you redo a building.
Yep.
But Gary's not doing that.
Correct.
The city inspector is.
What I'm saying is, the city inspector's also not looking, though, to say, we moved this wall, or we added a counter here, or something like that, that could impede fire rescue in case of where a fire inspection would be.
Only they're changing the building, not, five years from now, I don't have to do anything.
The biggest thing is the, is the use, change of use.
Yeah.
So like, the facility that I haven't named, there's a significant issue from the fire code because of change of use, and it mentions in the conditional use permit, adopting, following the fire code, but we're not there yet, if you will. So it's the biggest thing, this is the change of use and not knowing about what those are, you know, and then being able to go and do those inspections because, just because the building used before you, maybe it was a machine shop, and now you want to, I don't know, build boats out of it, there's different requirements from the fire code perspective. So there's things that need to take place, and that's where the part-time inspector, being able to go out and do existing buildings or work with Metro West, and hopefully at some point, no secret here, part-time to full-time at some point, where they can go and do plan review and, you know, overtime, obviously. And then we take that all back from Metro West at some point. So it's, it's a plan, you know, growing and moving forward. All right, thank you. Here, let me get yours up for you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My twenty-twenty-four budget presentation, hopefully I don't shock you.
Gary's wasn't that bad. I expect six, seven hundred thousand, and it wasn't anywhere near that.
You know, I always like to ask through the moon, so.
So here comes the shocker.
I'm going to keep it that way in twenty-twenty-four, too, just like I have in the past, so. As all departments have, we have our mission statements. We did this when I first became chief, and we still go by it and believe in it. If you want me to read it to you, I can, but I think you guys have mostly all seen it, my presentations. And we will put this on the website, too. We provide twenty-four-hour-a-day coverage, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We run for patrol twelve-hour shifts. We currently have chief of police, a lieutenant investigator, eight full-time officers, starting in July again, and four part-time officers. We have an office manager, one part-time administrative assistant, a community service officer, and two reserve officers. Some of the activities that we do keep us pretty busy. We currently have nine squads. At the top, it says eight, but I currently have nine. The mileage on the squads are getting high because we didn't get any last year, and hopefully we have some coming through enterprise or lease program. It looks like two have shipped, and two are, one of them's being built. So hopefully, we get them. We're keeping our fingers crossed because our repair and maintenance costs have gone through the roof. Part one, part two crimes. Part one crimes include murder, rape, robbery, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Some of the statistics throughout the year from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, as you've seen in twenty-twenty-two, we had an uptick in theft and motor vehicle thefts, which is pretty common around the metro areas these days with everything going on. So we, we're not the only ones that have seen it. Everybody in the suburbs and in Minneapolis, St. Paul has seen it. Part two crimes include other assaults, forgery, fraud, embezzlement, stolen property, vandalism, weapons violation, prostitution, sex offenses, narcotics, gambling, family and children DUI, liquor laws, and disorderly conduct, and some of the increases throughout the year. All part one and part two crimes in some way, shape, or fashion has an investigative piece to it, other than like you DUIs. So investigations are involved in a lot of the part one and part two crimes. And then this is our statistics through January of twenty-twenty-two through December of twenty-two. These are just some of our calls for service that we commonly go do. As you see, our PD accidents were up, property damage accidents were up quite a bit this year, and we saw an uptick in personal injury accidents. Medicals have gone through the roof, just seeing an increase in our everyday calls for service.
How many calls do you respond to a year on average?
I'm getting there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold your horses.
Total yearly activity, these are our total incidents. This is everything that we do on a daily basis, which includes house checks, residence reviews, gun permit applications, everything that we do as a police department is included in these statistics. Twenty-twenty-three is as of last week. So we're trending to be comparable to twenty-twenty-two or even higher currently. Some of the bookings that we had in twenty-twenty-two that we did at Hennepin County Jail, and then the ones we did at our police department where we booked and released them. Here's the shocker. Staffing goals for twenty-twenty-four. Looking to add two sergeants' positions, a full-time investigator in the traffic car, which would include four backfill patrol officers if promoted within the department. Reason for the two sergeants' position, currently, we do not have any supervision of our night patrol officers. They're out there on their own. So basically, if something happens, myself or the lieutenant gets a phone call, and then we're the supervisor on duty during those times. So we get phone calls in the middle of our evenings to discuss certain circumstances. This will also allow us to have a two-car minimum at nighttime. Currently, our department runs one-car minimum for day shift and night shift. So if one's off, we, we basically have one car on. Full-time investigator, as I've been talking the last couple of years, we have now basically been told that we are taking over all our investigations, so that's why we need a full-time investigator.
No, it won't go.
Paul, I thought we had two, two officers on at night for the last couple of years.
If somebody takes vacation, we're down to one car. Traffic car, reason for this position, this would provide increased presence for traffic enforcement. The officer would be responsible to complete all accident reports while on duty, free up call cars. It'd also be available while on duty to assist patrol cars as backup, and would work with neighborhood groups for traffic education and concerns. As we've all heard from numerous organizations, or numerous neighborhoods, that we have a traffic problem in our city, this car would be responsible to work with each one of those neighborhoods to educate and take care of their concerns. Other budget requests, over time, we increased five thousand. It's just increased in training for our officers, amended by the state, increased calls of service. Within-house investigations, it's going to be an uptick in overtime because they will be called out in the middle of the night for any in-custodies that they have to go and interview, or if there's search warrants that need to be drafted for searches. An increase in community outreach programs and events that we've been doing. Professional service, I've raised about four thousand. I'd like to start attending the International Chiefs of Police Association Conference, which is an out-of-state conference every year. I've talked to other chiefs that have attended. It's very good training, but it is out-of-state, so there's a cost associated. And same with increased mandated training, both in-house and external. And then we're starting to use Hennepin Technical College for simulation and scenario-based training, which is required by the state, and we haven't been doing it. Repair and maintenance costs, this is the biggest jump, one of the biggest jumps, fifteen thousand dollars. I've been over budget the last two years. Hopefully, with getting newer vehicles, we'll have warranty, and with the new lease program, we won't get over the warrant, or out of the warranty period before we start having a bunch of issues with our squad car because. issues with our squad car because the last couple of years, we've been down to two to three squad cars for months at a time. So hopefully that will help. Contract services, I've increased 4,000 just with the maintenance of the body worn cameras, maintenance with the Lexipol for our department policies, and additional programs that we're going to add to assist with doing in-house investigations. Motor fuels, with more cars on the road, more staffing, calls for service increase, we're going to probably see an increase in fuel costs and we don't know what the fuel prices are going to be next year. So wellness program, this is a new line item. I'm adding $10,000 to it. This allows for annual checkup for officers with the therapist and additional consults as needed, allows for purchase of exercise equipment as needed. This is also going to be a requirement with the new legislation for Public Safety Disability Bill to have a wellness program. Cost of this might be reimbursable through the one-time funding in 2023 that we are receiving that council member fashion talked about earlier. Other equipment, I increased $4,000. This is ammunition costs, force-on-force ammunition, that's scenario-based training, additional handguns to make sure we have backup handguns for any critical incident or repaired officer's main duty weapon if it goes down. The other expenditure is through my budget will stay relatively the same or slightly increased between 500 to 3,000 per line item. Other expenditures that somewhat set by an outside agency is our general workman comp insurance, which we saw a huge increase because of PTSD claims of 35,000. And this, is this a set number?
No, it's a best guess from what I can tell.
Same with property insurance, best guess of an increase of 11,000. Gas and utilities, increase of 5,000. Para is increase of the 91,630, which includes the four additional officers. I don't know if they, I can't remember if they did a percentage increase this year for cities.
No.
I don't know if they did or not. CIP needs, 2023, we have currently in there $60,000 records management upgrade, 2024, 30,000, and 2025, 40,000. We are just starting this process. We're unsure of whether we're going to be using any dollars in 2023 at this time, but the process is just in started. From start to finish, we're looking at three to four years of before we have a new system or an upgraded system. In 2024, I'm through 2028, I'm looking at adding new tasers, which we looked at purchasing or doing it through a lease program, which is a cost of 10,438 a year for five years. This includes the tasers, the batteries, the cartridges, all the download software, everything that you need. The nice thing about leasing compared to buying is all the cartridges that you use are replaced for free by Taser. So if we deploy one, Taser will send out us a new cartridge for free of charge. All batteries, anything, if the battery goes bad, free of charge, you have a new battery. You're not purchasing them every time one of the batteries dies. One of them goes down, you send it in, they repair it for free, send it back. The only thing that isn't covered in it is our training cartridges. And then the lease of the squad car and equipment, we showed you this kind of graph last year. And then future staffing goals, you got the 2024 that I went through, 2025 is promote and hire another sergeant slash investigator. They would be in charge of the investigation and also be investigator themselves and then hire a full-time backfill, promote, hire a sergeant, sergeant, and then full-time officer behind them. This would allow us to have two daytime sergeants to have supervisors, so you would have three cars, two cars on at all times as minimums. And then 2027, hire another full-time investigator. Some of the facts to consider, I've showed you this in the past with the change in, biggest thing is with the changing in housing, we're going to, with department senior housing, many of those will add calls for service. The interchange, we've seen an increase in accidents and calls for service down there. So just some of the factors that we consider when looking at this stuff. Some of the accomplishments that we did, purchasing implemented body worn cameras, we added the embedded social worker, which we just started, so we're still waiting to see what that's going to look like. We continue to utilize the data from the mobile speed signs, target patrol areas, brought back a bunch of community engagement events, implemented the camera registry, which is ongoing, and then took all over all investigations, including child and adult male treatment. This is kind of what we have. Investigations, views and monitors, all reports, follows up on investigation, has required followed up in the entire metro area in outstate Minnesota, monitors crime alerts, ensures and tells with officers. He attends metro-wide collaborations, forwards cases to Hennepin County, which isn't happening anymore just because of, Hennepin County does not do any investigations for us at this time. Has been addressing or resolving problem properties or people in the community that have been causing properties and works closely now with the embedded social worker for those cases. We had 158 cases in 2022 that was forwarded to the investigator for follow-up or review. Twelve were referred to Hennepin County, that's when they still were doing them at the beginning of the year. And then four cases were sent to the county attorney. Seventeen were inactivated due to lack of suspect. And then if you can't see the bottom slide, which I can't, we had 37 child protection cases and 22 adult protection cases. I am asking, he, I'm asking him to better refine the statistics for 2023 to include how many cases have been closed, how many have been charged, how many, so I, we're just trying to get the investigation portion up and running. So for statistics-wise and the end of 23, I'll have better statistics. And then so far this year, approximately 85 cases have been forwarded, three cases have been sent to Hennepin County Attorney, felony charges were brought, one and one is pending, that's the stabbing. Fourteen have been inactivated due to lack of suspect. And so far in 2023, we're up to 14 child protection, 12 adult cases. Any questions?
I've got a couple. Related to the traffic car, what does the city get from each traffic citation that you write?
Approximately $50.
Correct. Depending, they go really fast, we get 55 or 65.
No, no, but there's a number.
Yep. Well, 50. You did the math, right, you and I have been talking with this, you did the math on approximately what percent of that we think we could be covered just by them doing their job?
Yep.
Are you implementing a quota?
No quota, just, there's enough speeding happening in the city that they'll get it.
Roughly, an easy average would be about 50% of their salary would be covered by fines and so based on.
Zanzibar alone is going to pick up 90%.
For example, I know that the chief and I have talked and Champlin is 100% ROI on one of their traffic cars still. One of their one traffic.
And those are the typical citations, they're not administrative type citations?
Those are regular citations from Hennepin County, we get $50 per citation.
Correct. We get a payback monthly for it.
Yep, I thought that was stopped long ago because of that exact problem, because of quotas.
State of Minnesota has never allowed quotas.
It's not a quota deal.
Well, I get that, but it was an incentive. So I thought at some point they did not let the municipality make money on it.
Nope, there's always been a percentage. The only reason why a lot of cities switched to admin citations was because they got the full 100%.
Okay. And roughly, what kind of traffic, what kind of speed citations do we write a month?
I would have to look up the numbers.
Because I mean, there's a lot of it.
We get some right now, it's not like we get zero right now.
No, I understand, we get some, I mean.
Roughly, I think it's like $45,000 or something like that we get right now from fines.
And also we're looking at, for the investigation portion, we're trying to work with Anoka Hennepin School District to possibly see if we can get some funding for an SRO slash investigative position within the elementary school. So we are looking at that also for extra funding to support the investigation portion.
Couple of weeks ago or in the last update, you sent out a deal about how to get business information. And that's where I was going to say, can't we, can't you just send out the CSO to go around to these businesses and get that information?
So Officer McAlpine, who's our crime prevention specialist, he does, he goes out to businesses and gets keyholder information, all that information. He does that yearly.
Yearly.
Or as often as he can.
So we're, for the two positions, there's a possibility of funding. It's just we have, for the traffic cars, it's just generated by fines. And the investigator, we're still working with Anoka Hennepin to see if they would be willing to participate to assist in SRO investigative position. So during the school year, you'd work investigations out of the school and be at the school and then in the summertime would do complete full investigations out of the office. So we're looking at those options.
Given a city of our size, approximately 10,000 people, what is the kind of going calculation to figure out how many total officers we should have on staff? Is there one? I'm assuming that somebody's done a study on this.
There used to be an old adage, one, one, I don't know if that's accurate.
The new study is anywhere from two to three on per, or two to three per thousand.
And coming down the line, I mean, we're a month away or so, but we're going to see these actual numbers in percentage increase, correct?
Do you want me to tell you what my budget increased?
I don't need to know now.
I don't want you to have nitro. But yeah, well.
Yes, all of these will be provided.
So I'll let all the budget presentations have been given. I will send all the budget presentations to you guys to have and review until you have those available.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you. Within the next, within the next month, I will send you all the full budget listing so you can see.
Oh, yeah.
All of the numbers and have more questions and whatever else. And then we'll have work sessions on moving forward.
All right, we're going to recess for three minutes.
Perfect.
Ziegler CAT.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's now you have the Ziegler site plan and rezoning before you. The applicant is Wayne Hilbert of CNH Architects on behalf of Ziegler Trucking. It is a 2.7 acre site, guided commercial and zoned currently as business park, the purple designation and they're in the current MUSA area. So their request is to rezone to the site to B4 commercial industrial from their current designation of BP Business Park. This is consistent with the commercial future land use designation, so it is designated as commercial on the future land use plan within the 2040 comprehensive plan. There is an existing, the site as a whole is an existing building and this does have some small site improvements to conform, to bring the lot into what they want to use it for. But changing from the BP to the B4 district will not create any non-conformities in terms of setbacks, impervious surface, building height, things like that. So they'll still be in compliance with the city code from that perspective. So staff does support the rezoning based on that it is consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan, future land use designation. The site plan, just to call your attention to a couple of modifications on here, there is a new access drive between this property, the 18151 and 18171, and then another future gravel drive area to a loading bay door area. But otherwise, the site remains the same for, just for these couple of modifications. So the request for the site plan approval is to allow auto sales and auto rental use within the existing building, contained within the existing building. It's existing 28,870 square feet and it will house the proposed use of alternate fuel vehicles being electric vehicles. So there's no proposed modifications to the building at this time. Site plan does show the off-street parking and loading areas will be repaid with concrete as I indicated, and then there's a retaining wall that will also be constructed as part of this. They are proposing the gravel drive between the two properties with a shared access that will allow for employees to move between the two Ziegler properties, one for the CAT and then one for the auto sales and rental. No equipment from the equipment rental business may be stored on the auto sales site, so they can't store CAT equipment on the auto site. We're only permitting the auto with this approval. And then the existing access drive to territorial remain, so they will both have individual accesses out to the territorial, but then not just that shared access between the two So with that, there are two, one resolution and one ordinance. The resolution 23-2023 is for the site plan approval, and then ordinance 2023-04 would be the approval of the rezoning. So with that, if there's any questions for staff, and the applicant is here tonight, if you have any questions for them as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I could think it's more a comment than a question, and, you know, and it's, it's around the storing of vehicles onsite, or vehicles on display, and I understand that the model is that there wouldn't be any, that it's sort of indoor showroom kind of thing. But is it, I guess what I look back on, and it was when the RDO site was approved, they had a limited number of vehicles that could be displayed, and if you drive by there today, I challenge you to figure out which ones those are, because there's a dozen or more parked out there. And so it's, I don't know if this, if that's realistic. I think I read 30, there's 30 parking spots in the, in the lot, four for employees, four for customers, 22 are gonna have something in them.
Yeah.
And so, and I'm not, I'm in favor of this proposal, I'll say that right up front, but I, you know, I, I find it hard to believe that there won't be any new vehicles in some phase of delivery, or in for repair, or something happening, that, that parking lot is, is much fuller than the way this makes it sound.
At the Planning Commission, did they say it's kinda like to test the model, or like they just have a few there that are being delivered, so it's not like they have a bunch of them, but there'll be some, I think.
There's only concern is, if it's gonna be four there, let's not tell us one.
Yeah.
Let's just get the right number right up, up to.
They did indicate that they would be housing them in the building to do the showing of the, the models that they have, and then, once you purchase, it would have to be delivered, and then you pick it up. So the only time it would be onsite is between the delivery and the pickup. So whether that's a day or three days, depending on when they can pick up the vehicle, there will be some onsite, but it will only be for those deliveries and pickups, and not for actual showing, like on a traditional auto sales inventory lot. There won't be inventory sitting at the site. And that was what was indicated to staff through this, and that's the way we're proceeding with the site plan.
So a question would be, if there's six vehicles that are getting picked up, clearly there would be six onsite, right?
They're not picked up onsite.
They're not?
They're delivered directly to the customer.
Okay.
So you're looking at a model on site.
Yeah, why don't you come on up? Just state your name and address.
Yeah. Wayne Hilbert, CNH Architects, 7300 West 1747th Street, Apple Valley. So the way that this is supposed to operate is that they will have tractors onsite that you can look at, and then you make the purchase, and then when that purchase is done, that, those tractors are delivered directly to your business. So those tractors are there to, to be able to see and operate.
Okay, so there's a possibility there could be 10 tractors onsite?
Well, right now...
If you sold that many?
It's four or five that they're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're saying they're delivered directly, they're not?
They're delivered directly. So those four or five are models, basically, that you can take a look at, you can drive them, test drive them, come back, and then when you actually make the purchase, those purchases are directly to the, to whoever buys that.
And they never come to your facility, they go direct from the plant right to the customer?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if that helps.
I...
Yeah?
No. I think I know what I'm gonna see, and, you know, I just... Back during the RDO discussion, the same question came up, but that was for the platform upfront, but there's... Right.
Yeah.
Drive by. What are you gonna do? It's a business trying to sell these things, so, you know.
Yeah.
No, I just think it's gonna be different than, than this, and, and I'm still okay with it, I just don't, I don't buy it. All right. Any more questions? Need a motion and a second, then, for, are we gonna do, we can do both, right?
Yeah.
Both resolutions?
I'm gonna make the motion to approve it.
I'll second. Both.
Okay, any, any more discussion? All the supporters say aye?
Aye.
All the opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Good gentleman.
Okay, item J, master plan proposal.
Oh, this is gonna take a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My presentation for this is short, 'cause the, I think the memo and the map and everything and the budget were pretty self-explanatory, so I think the crucial point was, you know, in drafting the proposal, this was the master plan boundary that was utilized, based on conversations from council and planning commission, so that's what the proposal is on. If there's any questions on the boundary or the proposal itself, I could certainly answer those.
I do wanna make one, I do wanna make one clarifying note, that the boundary identified during the joint session was much larger.
Yes.
However, that was related to land use in total and not master planning here.
Correct. That was a, that was a study area.
So I wanted to make sure that we knew the difference between a master plan and a guided land use plan boundary. The discussion at the joint session was a guided land use plan boundary, which went all the way down south towards territorial road, and then back north, and then past 125th, up to what I would say would be, I imagine, 129th, and then over to French Lake. This would be a master plan for the extension, and focused on the extension of the parkway, only because that's the 2020 area that we would be focusing on for development, and everything south of there, we can most certainly look at and discuss if that's something that the council wants to do, but master planning, too large of an area, is gonna be very, very difficult for us long-term. As in, master planning is like dissecting an area, or as land use planning is much more broad and such, so.
And would we look at a master plan as, this is gonna be developed as it is, and therefore, the whole shoot match is kind of in current, once it's released to the public, right?
Yeah, you could, you could section it off, essentially.
You could, but then that kinda defeats part of the purpose of the, so, I thought, getting to your point, it seems like this is a really big master plan.
That's...
And it seems too big.
I could agree.
Okay.
We can certainly refine it, too. This is a very comparable size to the couple master plans that were done in Corcoran recently. So it is a master plan, you're not gonna actually design the specific sites that go within the master plan boundary, I mean, we're not gonna do site layouts for individual parcels, but it does look at transportation, road network, architecture design, the parkway, if there's a parkway, what it looks like, what the boulevards look like. It's gonna be much more defined than you typically look at in like a comprehensive plan from the 30,000 foot level. It's gonna dig deeper, but not all the way to, like, you're not gonna see civil site designs of the sites themselves, or anything like that.
Wasn't the purpose part of this, and I'm trying to remember, so correct me if I'm wrong, but to figure out more, not maybe concretely, but more specifically where Dayton Parkway was actually going to go to get it to connect up?
That would be part of this.
So if we, if we reduce the size, are you thinking of reducing the size, my concern if we reduce it north-south, we don't, we don't finish, like, where that line is gonna be on the map?
No, we don't, but we, we can still, I mean, it's no different than anything else. So let's say you, you truncated it, say halfway up, or at the bottom of those keyboard slots. You could still say, here's where the road's coming out, or here's where the road's at, and it would be no different than what we have today, and that's the, you know, the, what you call it, a fat pencil, whatever, rough, rough drawing of what road's gonna be. My concern is, is there's a lot of 2050-plus land in here. And it just seems like that's a big chunk to, to, to pull in.
Can't, can't some of the 2050 land just be kind of a, it's on the, it's on the plan, but let's not really do anything about it?
Well, except if some of your drainage ponds, or you have some other, I mean, the whole point of doing a master plan is you can do all these parts roughly in parallel, right? You got the whole package. And if part of your package isn't gonna be done for 20 years, you're gonna have a problem, depending on what it is.
Do you think in two to three years, three years, four years, if I get the years right, the recon plans redone, that, that the, the decades may move around a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
Like, things that are 2030 now may become 2050, and things that are 2030 now may become 2030, just to help get the road in place? Or not?
Maybe, maybe, yeah, I could see that. I could see us juggling something.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not, I'm not saying pull more, like, the total amount of land mass stays the same for each decade.
Just move this stuff around, yep.
Moving puzzle pieces around to make it, 'cause I think, as I think about this, getting Dayton Parkway kind of done up to Zanzibar, right, to some extent, is, will, is important for the city's long-term growth. I really do, that's my opinion of it, and I don't know if everyone agrees with that or not, that's my opinion. So, I, I personally would rather see them do this the whole way through with the hopeful idea that when the comp plan gets redone, and whoever's here to redo that looks at this and says, yes, this, too, we agree, this is still important, and so this land maybe gets moved all to 2030, and we take some 2030 land, move it to 2050. I don't know what that looks like, but that juggle would have to happen at that point in time, if it's gonna be made. What I'd hate to do is do half of it now for the planning, and then be like, God, I wish you would've done it all, and it would've cost us an extra, it would've cost us, you know, a little bit more to do it all now, versus twice as much to do it in two chunks. I don't know if the pricing would pan out to actually have this done, but...
I'm guessing.
Right. Well, you can tell kinda from the schedule, if you did it twice, you have twice the number of open houses and meetings and everything.
Well, I'm just looking at that task, too.
Yeah, so the task, too, like the plan preparation, if you're doing it all at once...
Is it cheaper than doing half of it now and half of it later?
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's my thing, like, I'd, that's where I'm at. I don't know, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer to this, that's just where I'm at.
I agree, it's imperative to get the alignment, if it's gonna connect to Zanzibar.
We can get the alignment, I'm not, we can get the alignment today.
Well, I mean, with more than a fat line on the, on the marker, 'cause that's what this'll give us, is more than a fat line, right?
Oh, oh, sure, it's, but, I mean, if we did the lower, say, two-thirds, then where that line comes out for the road, it's pretty clear where the road's gonna be. I, my concern is, is that if we do a large area plan that takes us 15 years to implement, we screwed up.
So the goal of the plan is, is for things that are, that are closer to current?
I, I think if you want to try to regulate, predict what kind of planning we're gonna be doing over the next, say, five years, I think a large area plan's the way to go, and I, from the large area plans, I've seen this is, seems really large. And it doesn't even include what's south of it, which, which, you know, I, I don't know what kind of impact that would be, but...
So does this help? Is it, I think where you're, where you're going is, you chop this off a little bit and somehow keep this area in the view and, and school some of that?
I, I hadn't thought much what, 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 in outcome of what I was thinking was, but it would be simply take the top third and pull it out of the plan.
Just move the line down a little bit.
Yeah, just move the line down to...
That giant property that goes all the way across there?
Take the, the north boundary and bring it down to...
Here.
Yeah, and that, and the only reason is sheer volume. It just seems like, the plans I've seen, for, since I think Maple Groves, this one is, is, is like 330 or 3, I don't remember what it is now, but it just seems like 500 acres is a big chunk, especially since it's not including the south part, which we know is kind of in current. I mean, it, it...
The boundary can be adjusted to whatever we, what the council thinks is the correct boundary.
Yep.
This is just a suggestion based on, you know, where the parkway and the, and the efforts to get the parkway moving forward.
So when you do that, does the comp plan show the final, say you move it down a little bit, to where the east-west line goes, comes across, does the comp plan show the extension of the parkway to Zanzibar then?
Well, it does today.
And it'll show us a fat marker, versus a specific...
Right.
Right now, with, with your transportation plan amendment you, we adopted last meeting, it shows it currently going from where it is today to Zanzibar.
To Zanzibar.
And so now, this would be doing the next step of getting it a little more, okay, let's diagnose where it should actually go, and not just that fat marker on the...
And fine-tune everything in the area.
I don't have a problem moving it down a little bit, and it's just...
And I don't know that that's the right answer, it just seems like this is a lot of acreage, and a lot of 2050 acreage, and, like I said, it doesn't even include...
My biggest concern is the road, and what's fairly adjacent to the road, as far as the planning is concerned. So, like, if we wanna shift it east to west, reduce the acreage, that's fine, we can move it down, too, I don't think it'll matter, I think you're right, 'cause it's gonna end somewhere, and then whoever's property's right there, they know what's gonna come through, right?
Right.
But, but in my, the same standpoint, it's like, well, if we're gonna go that far, and we all know it's gonna go there, then why not just do it? Like, that's the, I, I'm okay with either choice, but I, I would prefer to see it called.
I just think that's a big chunk to chew off, but I, I guess... Planning Commission has not seen this yet, right?
They have not.
Correct. Okay.
And they won't, 'cause we're gonna vote on it tonight, right?
They will likely work on this with you, in, in conjunction with approval, I guess, said the, so the proposal would have nothing to do with Planning Commission, that's why it's here at councils. Do you wanna move forward with this master plan amendment? Do you wanna do something with the master plan here? If you do, then we will, we will utilize you and the Planning Commission to do this process.
And they may agree that it's too big an area right off the bat, where you go down that avenue, but...
It's just a sense of time thing, obviously, trying to get things moving forward.
So from what you guys have seen, is this a big chunk?
I, I've done master plans that are 200 acres, and I've done ones that are 750, 1,000, so...
And what's a realistic timeframe to meet your master plan?
What do you mean, to like, fully develop it? That is entirely driven by the development community, because it's really up to them on whether they wanna invest in a commercial property, if you show us commercial, industrial, so I can't, we, as part of a master plan, we're not gonna say, we're doing the master plan, which means you have to develop it in five years. That won't happen, we don't, it doesn't work like that typically, so you just master plan to provide information for when someone does come in. And it will, I mean, utilities will be the, the, availability of utilities will be the driving factor for when it develops. So right now, utilities are currently available in this, the southwest corner, you know, like, right where the four stovepipe lots are that are orange. So extending will have to go through their properties, and then the next one in the line, and then the next one, that's what'll drive development. But then, if you have the master plan in place, you have that tool to say, here's what we've envisioned, and here's what we anticipate happening in this area, here's the alignment we anticipate for Dayton Parkway, here's what we anticipate for the small park areas, or if this is the trail area, or what we anticipate for land uses in this area, things like that will be part of that master plan.
Will it figure out East French Lake Road, too, if it even exists after everything's all said and done?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the discussion, I think, with the Dayton Parkway and that connection, and East French Lake, I think that's all part of the alignment discussion on future roadways for Dayton, that we would be talking about, so I can't answer it without having done the process.
Yeah, yeah, but it will be considered.
Yep, yeah. And that's, that's the reasoning I included, East French Lake and Dayton Parkway, for the full extents of the connection from where Dayton Parkway is now to Zanzibar, and including East French Lake, because I know those are two major roadways that we need to have talks about. So that's why this boundary is the way it is, that was my thought process, at least, based on feedback.
Yeah, and I, I don't, so, when, let's say you, we complete, we come up with a recipe for those, what this area should look like. How does that get pushed into development? Does a developer come in and bid on the project? Do they maybe go together and bid on a proj, I mean, how's that work, where, I shouldn't say bid, but accept the responsibility, implement this plan?
That's what's gonna happen when you get something...
Well, we have a couple, like, when you adopt a master plan, there's, and this is something we talk about when we first come forward with a, what kind of framework we wanna use, I mean, you can adopt it as part of your zoning ordinance, the master plan itself, and put it as an appendix to the zoning ordinance, and then therefore, it's required as part of your city code. You can use it as a policy document, saying, here's our adopted 2040 comprehensive plan, we've done this master plan to further refine the vision in this area, and use it as a tool to say, this is what the city would like to see, and as part of your application, we would have you proceed with a comprehensive plan amendment. So say, in the new vision, the commercial shifted slightly here, and it wasn't longer this current couple of triangles like this, but it shifted, and someone came in and wanted to develop commercial, or wanted to develop this parcel over here, and we had commercial over there. We would make them come in with a comprehensive plan amendment if it was between now and when we had done the next 10-year update, to say, we were envisioning this as part of this master plan, when you come in, we expect it to be a commercial use, and therefore have a comprehensive plan amendment associated with it. And so those are the tools, you can either have it as part of the zoning ordinance, or you can have it as a policy document that goes alongside, essentially works with your comprehensive plan, that you would then require when development comes in.
So how do we guarantee that? And let's say, we plan this out and decide that, you know, a, a certain area is gonna have the bulk of the drainage holding pond. you know, a certain area is going to have the bulk of the drainage holding pond. At what point does that get implemented and/or paid for if people are doing parcels still?
Well, we wouldn't do a stormwater evaluation in terms of like where stormwater is going to actually locate. That would be on a site-specific basis unless we chose to look at doing a regional type of treatment. So if you're doing an individual site-specific, you know, one stormwater pond per parcel or per development, because some of these parcels will likely combine to go together. I mean, you're not, you probably won't develop any of these four medium densities by themselves. They'll kind of likely go as a group.
Yeah.
And so it kind of depends on how, who decides to sell and when and how they come in as a whole with a developer. And then that would inform whether you have one local stormwater pond, a bigger regional pond. And that would all have to be evaluated more when those proposals came in. We could do some preliminary, you know, to look at grading, which we would do as part of it to know where the road would be aligned and things like that too. Where it's most likely that they'd be located and based roughly, you know, how much land area you would need for stormwater ponding. But it's hard to say exactly where the ponds will go. That's an analysis you'd do as part of this specific development when you lay out parking and buildings and things like that.
I think the difference here is, maybe I'm wrong, a lot of the developments have been like, here's 40 acres, let's build 40 acres. In this case, it's a bunch of smaller, not small, smaller lots in 48, no, in eight, 40 acres. And they're going to have to, developer coming to buy all four and then do what they, but what fits the plan in there, right? Is that what you're saying, Mr.?
Right. Because the smaller orange ones to use as a reference, just because I know that lot sizes are four and a half acres apiece to give you a sense of scale. So none of these are 48, well, there might be a couple that are these ones over here that are larger. But most of them are much smaller than are the typical 40-acre section, you know, quarter subdivision lines. So they will likely be developed as part of a hole where a developer buys up all three adjacent properties and develops them as a whole.
Do we have more statutory power for allocating costs? My understanding is we do. So for example, you know, if you're, if you're developing something and, and we see a road impact off the property, today we can't, we can't do anything with that.
Kind of like need for roundabout, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the Harstead.
Oh, the Harstead versus.
There's no way to charge a development for having an impact.
Unequitable off-site transportation fee, meaning we can't, unless we can tie it back to their development, we can't charge them for it. So we can, you know, like they have right and left turn lanes out of their new subdivision. We require that all the time because it's being brought forward because of that development, but we can't say, charge a transportation fee that goes in a general bucket and then is used wherever we feel it's needed because it's not associated with that development.
Right.
That's what that case established.
Yep. So my understanding was with these, we had more power to do that, to allocate costs based on an impact.
From the master plan area?
From the master plan area.
It would be more the, when a development comes in, if we had a master plan showing that there was some type of feature that we wanted as part of that area, we would require that with a development, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't implement a general fee for the entire area that we would then charge them as part of it because they're in the master plan. It would still be whatever's associated with the area that they're developing.
I did no fair follow-up. See, I think the wheels are. Yeah.
That was not my understanding. And I'm still, my understanding was that we could somehow assess an impact. Does that ring a bell at all?
It can create a nexus tied to the development itself. There might be a way to leverage funds from the development towards the improvements. If that's in any case, I don't know if there's any additional ability to do so having.
Are you thinking like every per square foot, a dollar goes into this pot that's been used to help with X, Y, and Z for the whole master? Is that what you're thinking?
Roughly, yeah.
I mean, it's clear that all of that is going to gain because of it.
Yeah, the master plan area should make it so that really is less, I would hope less necessary for planning this whole area and the impacts that those kind of things would have as we, as we do it as one area, right? Isn't it part of the benefit of it too, is that like you don't get these gotchas because now we had four developments that caused this incident versus this, I just keep using like round, a need for roundabout versus one, where you know there's need for roundabout that's driving that, right? So you can tie it back to one, one particular thing.
Right, so a single small development might not justify the need at the time.
But the whole master plan.
When you get five of them, all in the same area, all of a sudden you need that roundabout where it should have come from, the five. But you can't do it when they're implemented one at a time.
But with the master planned area, we should know like, oh, this intersection is going to allow traffic, so we're going to want a roundabout here, so it needs to be built as part of that. So it's just, it's as part of the master planned areas, what you're saying, correct? I keep using roundabouts just because for me it works, but yeah.
So it's one of those things where because of the court case and how it has a legal standing, I just want to, because I haven't had that question come up, to be honest, on how, on anybody implementing a policy or a fee like that. So that's just something as we're going through the process, if it's a desire to do, I'd want to just confirm with the city attorney that we have legal standing to do that and not get in ourselves a trouble down the line because we do have to establish that.
Would we like to hear from the city attorney?
I don't know if he has it available. If you have the expertise for it, you most certainly can step up.
I don't deal with developer people much. Jay Square is in our office, does it? That may be something we can check.
So that's one of those things I want to confirm before we wait that route. Because I'm not 100% sure on the answer.
Either way, I think we're under the master planned area, right? And that doesn't, does that, does the answer to that question change your want to have a master planned area?
I don't think so. But I mean, there's a couple of things that I think that the master planned area would, would help us with. One is, is predicting our development rate. And and to be able to, instead of, I just always thought it very haphazard that we do, you know, this 50 acres and this 60 acres and this 100 acres. And instead of looking at all of those acreages as a whole and saying, here's where these things should be.
I agree 100%.
So that's. So the transportation impacting would have been a bonus.
Maybe we'll get the bonus. Who knows? Maybe great, right? For this, then are we okay with this area? I mean, if, if he says his master planned areas from 200 to 1,000, this is how many? 500?
I think it's about just over 500.
Yeah, that seems kind of right in the middle of that. Are you, do you still think the size needs to, needs to be shrinks? Or you think it's okay with the way it is or?
I don't, I think it's too much, but I guess I could be swayed.
What's the difference in cost? I mean, what's the difference in cost if we go from a 300-acre parcel to a 500-acre parcel? Are we talking?
It's just a little less to look at for information purposes. So it's just, it would decrease some of the hours in putting the plan together and doing the information gathering in the maps. So it'd just be a little, I'd have to look at what numbers for what hours and see how that affects the budget.
But it's not the equivalent to the, if you remove 30% of the land, it doesn't remove 30% of the cost.
No, because there's some of the costs, it's just a sort of stage with having open houses and having the meetings and having the discussions, yeah.
Wasn't your ballpark number for this master plan like 75, 80 grand or was it closer to 100? I forget.
No, it was more in the 40 to 50.
Just to develop the master plan itself, it's like 45.
Fortune, but either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a strong feeling about the area. I get what you're saying with that it's, you know, it gets to be a lot. But I haven't gone through one of these yet, so I'm happy that we're doing it because I think it's a more thoughtful way for us to plan future uses in the city. My comment was going to be more nitpicky to ask, are we going to get 5500 dollars worth of value out of 3D renderings?
Oh. Yeah. Okay, so the question here is, do we want to go forward with this, this outline?
This outline of the master plan boundary or an adjusted amended one based on whatever the council feels is too much or too little from what the boundary is. Again, this was just set by, Kevin and I had a conversation and I said, just set it between Zanzibar and 117th only because that's where the Parkway is not, it's more fat-lined. And we all agree that the land use in that area is not correct based on the current alignment, so.
I'll help. I'll make a motion that we use the current plan as it sits here today in fairness.
I'm going to second, only because I don't think the cost is that big a deal. If it's 10,000 bucks difference, we'll spend it 10 years from now anyway.
You're saying use the whole area.
I'm using exactly, use the area that's outlined and blue on the map up there.
What cost were you talking about then?
He's.
But if you were to lower the line.
If you were to lower the line, it's not going to save that much money.
No, it's not. And it's also not going to add significantly more to do it in two chunks, so I don't know. I've sent my piece. All right. Any more discussion? You seconded it? Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. All right.
We did not do the additional, correct?
What additional?
The 3D renderings.
We did not do that, correct?
Just included as a, if it was wanted, but I don't know.
That doesn't buy me any. Yeah, I would chuck that.
Do we devote on that too?
Nope, nope. I just want to make sure that I understood what the motion was.
No, that would only be if you said, yes, we want it and then just did it without it, so.
Correct.
Perfect. I did the right thing. Okay. And you think that one more planning, look at this or start looking at this or who will? I thought they were going to take kind of a first stab at.
Yep. So that, the idea would be that now that we have the proposal planned, now that we have that done, I would expect that Kevin and Landfill would start working on the process right away to work with Planning Commission, first stab or whatever, then we can do during work sessions. Likely the plan will take roughly a year in total to get completed, just so that everyone has a timeline frame of roughly.
So how do we deal with, and this may be not a fair question, given what we just approved, the stuff south of there, and in fact, some of that area is just totally want, right? So what do we do if we get a, this is, if we get a proposal, do we simply fall back on we have authority for zoning? I mean, what do we do if we get, for example, a request to put in a QuickTrip in the red?
In the red area?
Yeah.
If it didn't, because it's based on parcel area, so they'd have to make sure that the parcel matches exactly what the land use shows. So that would be one. Other two, number two, we would make sure and try to figure out if the zoning would work is my guess, but I can defer to Kevin to answer the question on a more professional level that he would know more than I would for planning purposes.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about roughly the one that has the.
South of the line.
Yeah, south of the line with like kind of the red double triangle carrot and the purple.
Even north of the line, it's red, so it's guided commercial.
Except for it's in 20, that's in 2020, which is not considered current. Everything south to 117th is considered current.
Oh, because we haven't pulled it into current.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So yeah, so let's focus on that one then. How, how do we?
So with that, we, the development would have to come in and if they wanted to develop and not, you know, it's a tough question to answer. So like if we had a development come in, say, for QuickTrip or some use in the commercial area, they would have to meet all the standards they wanted to go in per our city code. So they would have to meet everything, parking, like every single city standard, which.
Which they will.
Most developments have come in and have some type of variance from city code, whether it's a PUD flexibility or a variance that they request. But as part of that, they're still going to have amendments or flexibilities from the code is part of a development typically. If they wanted to come in in the 1% of the cases where they met every single standard all the way through, they could develop as long as they meet everything from the city code perspective. If they needed any type of CUPs or anything, that's, that's.
That's the gotcha we have. That's the tool.
I think we're, I can comfortably say we're safe from a city code standpoint that nothing meets all our standards every single time just because the market and development are different than what our city code states typically. Because we just, development happens faster than the city code gets updated. So they're typically our standards that we have to grant flexibility on. Whether that's parking or other types of areas. But we have the authority too with them coming in to say, you know, our envisioned future land use doesn't actually match up with your parcel. So you've got half commercial, half industrial, and we'll have to amend it to, you know, match the parcel boundaries and split it up. Because most likely, the parcel boundaries won't actually match up with the future land use that we have guided. I mean, we have.
Those wonky angles help us.
So I doubt that they're going to develop that way. So we'll need to do amendments to bring the boundaries into conformance of the city parcels that end up developing with those developments.
Okay.
And is there sewer and water and then you get red south of the line?
The last one is sewer and water, exactly. Sewer and water is not available at that corner.
It's not there, right?
No.
So that'd be, that'd be another.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm hearing we're safe.
Yes, we will have.
Risk is low, but not guaranteed to be zero.
Exactly, yeah. But we will have future land use discussions in that area during the next comp plan amendment.
Okay. Okay. Plan and Park Commissioners. What are we doing? Oh, we skittle.
We skip C. That was pulled to be pulled after H, but that's okay. We can, we can either go back to C right now, if you'd like to, that would be fantastic, to approve the crosswalk policy proposal that we pulled from the consent agenda, got moved underneath H.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Which is at the end of the world, but I don't know if you want to just rehash that one quick and pull it back up and.
I just want to have, to me, to me, it makes much more sense to keep this in-house and have staff look at what we have one or two blocks down the road and come up with some sort of a policy rather than spending.
In my, yeah, I agree with you. In my mind, the policy is really straightforward. It's like every crosswalk, it's painted. If it's within so many feet of a park, it should have, or a school, it should be signed. And if it's 40 miles an hour higher, it should be flashing. That's like literally what I'm looking for. And in my mind, someone can type that up in 30 minutes, bring it to the council. We can discuss it and say, yeah, if you like this, change that, whatever, and then we just implement it. That, that's my initial thought of this. I'm not $12,000. I know it's an hourly and you're guessing. Even if it's $300 an hour, my guess is that we could get that done hour, one hour and not use them and pay a lot less. And I know we've got, you and I talked about the opportunity costs of this. It's like, well, if we have somebody that works here, do it. That's something that they can't work on around a building permit or deck permit or something else. It then still goes to them for cost. So it's kind of a wash point. So I don't know exactly if someone can squeeze an extra hour of work into typing something up and it is a wash cost or if we can actually save money by doing it in the city.
Yep, yeah, I think it's mostly possible. Like I said, we've just historically always gone with consultants because we haven't had the staff. It's just been, oh, can, can.
Call Rogers and see if they got one.
What I would need then is a motion to deny the proposal.
I'm going to make the motion to deny that proposal.
Paul second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor of denying the proposal? Say yes.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries unanimously.
Just to clarify, we're still going to work on that. We will see something from the city, so it's still, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Sorry, no, item K.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay. We got three for three?
The motion?
Yep. All motion and second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All right, any discussion on this? You know, a couple of years ago, we had like 418 people apply for planning and that was only when I was doing. Was that what it was?
Seven, but that's okay.
More than 18.
And, and the thing is, we, yeah, okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And now, did we, I thought, what was I thinking? We had some other?
Yep, we have one more.
Oh, that's right.
Item M.
Item M.
This is the fire engine 21, which is the engine for prescription two here, repair approval. Take it away, Fire Chief Hendrickson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Engine 21, I've talked about it a few times at the last couple of council meetings, unfortunately. It's been at Boyer Trucks in St. Michael's since May 31st. We kept getting, check engine light on the truck, just to give a little bit of background. We used it down on the fire that we had in the dumpster. And it would go off intermittently. So we had emergency apparatus maintenance come, EAM come out, who typically deserves maintenance. Look at that. There's about $1,300 investment from them on top of what you see in front of you or what I sent to you late this afternoon in repair of this truck. Unfortunately, this truck is a vintage of 2009 and only has 18,766 miles on it. in repair of this truck. Unfortunately, this truck is a vintage of 2009, it only has 18,766 miles on it, and the cost for rebuild is $28,116.70, and then we have to add in our current bill of $7,904, or 95, for a total of $36,021.65. I believe, as you saw in my presentation earlier, with EAM's help in making sure that we do maintenance on these annually, Marty's been helpful in doing the maintenance that they've been able to do in his shop, but it looks as though, and potentially even back to engine 11 last year, where we had to replace the turbo, I think it has to do with just maybe infrequent maintenance. In this case, the crankcase filter that we believe is probably potentially the culprit has never been changed in the 14 years of the truck.
So that stuff possible?
I don't, I don't have an answer for you, Scott, unfortunately. So obviously, that's getting the dust through the blow-by filter, or through the blow-by, which then goes into the motor, and now we're causing that pitting and having to be rebuilt.
The only, the only comment I have there is, and this is based on experience, my son in his young days has burned up two cars because he never put oil in them. That's just plain flat-out carelessness, that you don't check that stuff, and to me, every vehicle that we have should be on a regular annual maintenance program, and somebody should be watching that.
Yeah, and I know Marty, Marty can speak to what he's done in the past. I know they've done filters, air filters, fuel filters, and that's why my increase to $60,000 for next year, because I did get a quote for EAM to do the annual maintenance on all trucks, and it's about $1,000 a truck, so it's well, a good investment at that thousand to prevent $36,000 or above of cost, and that service bolt that I sent out really kind of covers it basically, so I think it's probably back, attributed back to that, that filter in some capacity, getting the dust into the motor.
Ooh. Today, do we, for our entire fleet, police cars, public works, fire trucks, everything, do we have somebody that is kind of responsible to keep track of that, or is each department to it, or?
So we, and traditionally taking care of police and fire department, we've got records for all of the service requirements we've done. It was a hard paper copy before, now we've got a digital version that we update every time that anything's changed, and we record what's changed, what the date, what the mileage was, and what we did.
Yeah, but that's what happened. Do we have anything that says this thing's due for maintenance?
Here's what is required in that maintenance.
So on the regular trucks, we just, you know, for oil change and stuff like that, we just use the window sticker or something along those lines. With the smart sheets, if it goes over a certain date, then that will trigger us and say, hey, this is, you know, this is due for oil change or whatever, that way.
Changes color to ready to get close to the due date? Most smart sheet can't do that. I don't know if you have it set that way.
I don't know if I've got my smart sheet that sophisticated just yet, but I'm sure it's capable of doing that.
So in other words, that's still, still something that we're working on, but that doesn't still explain how that happened over the last 14 years, that nobody looked at that filter. And I'm, there again, I'm no mechanic, I don't know nothing about it. Is that something that should be on a 5,000 mile deal, or?
And you know, I'm not an expert on that either. I'm not aware of us ever looking at those kind of filters. It's not one of the filters that we would look at. It may be something more of a specialist. There's certain things that we can-
Transmission filter, you just don't always change it on 20,000 mile, I mean, I don't.
I mean, I don't know how frequently those are supposed to be done.
So it sounds like, in check with EAM, this would be something that would be done annually, as a part of the annual maintenance contract with them in that capacity, so we use them on a regular basis for, you know, repairs, but this became outside of their scope after a certain point, because they didn't have a certain tool or whatever, so hence that's why I had to go to Boyer.
So, I know we're kind of digressing on a different path, but should we be waiting until next year to have them do that? Like, if, there might be other things that miss, and other pieces that haven't been done. You said it's budgeted for next year, which I think is going to be budgeted for next year, but do we have any concern that there's other things in other engines that by waiting another possible year plus till it actually gets looked at by AEM? Should we do it this year is my question?
What was the cost?
It's, the number that came back was about $1,000 per truck, if I recall, I think. Wasn't it $6,000, Zach, I think?
Yeah, I was just short of that, I believe.
Something of that. I'd have to go back. I did get a quote from them.
Forty-some dollars.
Somewhere in there.
And that's for how many vehicles?
We have seven. Seven big trucks.
Whole fleet for fire, right?
Yeah, for fire. That's just for fire, yes.
Are you talking on all your trucks too? No.
No.
Okay.
Well, at least for the fire, my concern is, we're halfway through this year. If we do it next year, I don't know if we get to pick what month it gets done, but should we have it done this year?
Are you asking them to start now?
Start now, so that way we don't have something two months from now that we also didn't replace, supposed to be done annually, that causes-
You're talking about the AEM?
Yeah.
That part only.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we don't really have any choice on the engine.
Correct, yeah.
You have to repair it, yeah.
Agreed. But my point is, I think trying to make sure this doesn't happen between now and next year is important to take those steps. Seems like a small investment to outweigh the possible risk that could come if we don't.
You have a $6,000 investment, it could save you $30,000 every year.
Hopefully.
Well, my question also is, is like Marty, do you, like, do we have an ASE certified mechanic?
No.
So that could downplay, that could play into why this filter got missed, just simply because we don't have a Cummins certified technician on staff, so-
Do you have any of that kind of stuff we would send out to Boyer?
Yes.
To take care of those things that we're not certified to do.
I don't know that you need an ASE certified personnel to catch.
Well, well, I mean, I could argue the difference and say you did, because we clearly missed it for 14 years.
And using somebody on our staff that's ASE certified wouldn't have missed it.
I'm just saying if they had the right training, say we had somebody from Sterling or somebody from Cummins come do the training, says this is what your fleet, these are the things you should look on for.
So I know, you know, when I get a vehicle, or more of a utility vehicle, so a tractor right up front, it'll say, every six months, check this, every year, check this, every five years, check this. Do we, when we get these vehicles, do we put that anywhere as reminders, or, so we don't have any system that'll kind of watch that for us?
Right.
Yeah, Skid steer tells you to change the air filter, change the hydraulic.
Other than that, no, we are working on that, but, you know, we're doing general maintenance on the stuff, and we don't have any diesel mechanics on board, so that's kind of-
No, that makes sense that if you have a task you have to do, that you farm it out to who's going to do it, but what happened here was we missed something.
Correct. I think the answer is we have not done that historically, however, we are working on it now moving forward to be able to say-
When we bring new equipment in.
Bring new equipment in, this is what we'll follow, which I agree with. I think everyone, every owner's manual has, every year, check this, every 10,000 hours, check this.
They'll give you the next 10 years on the things.
So-
And then we can sell expensive filters.
Historically, no, that is not the answer. We have not done-
But that helps Marty with his store room when he goes to plug the filters in their-
And I think some of the, the other part of this is, we would only do their trucks once a year, because of the limited mileage on those trucks, you know, so you don't want to go and change the oil every, you know, three months or whatever, so we've always just statistically done it every year. And then when there's other things come up, we've taken a look at those things as well, but-
Yep, okay.
But yeah, this is far as we're moving forward from here, you know, a small price to pay for this slight inconvenience, but you know, to make sure that we're good for the next 10 years, is like, when we do bring those new pieces in, let's make sure that's part of the plan. Whether that be we have the program, or we have to make it, or we buy it, whatever the case may be, making sure that when those intervals hit, that we do that, so we don't have to put-
And the smart sheet can do that for you too.
Yeah.
You can put it all, like the whole 10 years of the maintenance in, and it'll calculate the dates out and everything.
However it gets done, yeah.
It's a very sophisticated thing. I'm not that sophisticated.
Yeah. I'm just so you know, the tool will do it, that's all I'm saying.
So we don't actually have any, any choice around this? I mean, it's, you know, do this or go buy a new truck? I mean, is that, is that really what the options are?
Yeah, that's unfortunately pretty much the options.
Now's the time to get that ladder truck.
New engine, or look for a new, it's not like the whole thing, but as a-
I think if you amortize a new engine across 20 years, you're still-
I bet you, as a solution, I'll bet you that place up in Little Falls, it's got to use motors in there.
You got to buy the truck.
We are checking into, just, just to double check, wasn't able to get the information today, you know, rebuild this one, or, you know, what's the cost of a new one? I don't know if there's value in that or not. You know, the, the hard reality is, is that at least at the moment, this truck is scheduled to be replaced in six years. So, you know, big picture.
So I'll motion.
All right.
I'll second.
We can talk about replacing it, and well, I won't be talking about it.
Yeah, if it's something else changes, like I said, after this motion and a second, we will most certainly bring it back to the council, so that you have an update for it. We won't proceed if it's going to be cheaper for us to do X, Y, Z option.
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion? I guess I'm not sure what, why we're, why we're approving it. It seems to me it's, this is, you know, a failure, it needs to be fixed. There's a budget, I'm sure this will blow the budget, but so I'm not sure what we're, what we're, what we're asking, or what we're being asked to approve.
Our purchasing policy only requires myself to approve up to $25,000 prior to council.
Okay, because it's above that amount.
Because it's above $25,000, city council has to get involved in the process.
Maybe you guys approve each piston, or, you know. Which would not be the first time that was done.
That's not the goal.
Okay.
So that is why you're, that's why it's bringing back as an item and had come today.
Yeah.
Again, over the, we didn't want to wait two more weeks to wait for the process to go through, because we're still on an engine.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those-
We didn't get a second, did we?
Yep.
Yeah. Travis.
Well, that only makes sense, right?
Just keep it in the movie, Scott.
You good? I mean, I want to do my job too, outside of here, I mean, geez.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
So as a follow-up to that, do we want to talk about having that maintenance done by them?
We could check, we'll check it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yep.
Okay, I got to read this.
Oh, you got to read it. Hold on, we got to, you got to read into it.
All right, closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3B, for confidential discussion with legal counsel regarding pending litigation.
We are back in from closed session and if there are no objections, we will be adjourned.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.